This April 4, 2019, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Spring Hill Elementary School Harmony Ensemble under the direction of Deborah Rudd.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much to Spring Hill Elementary School. You were beautiful. The Board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session, which preceded tonight's regular meeting. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage, selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meeting's webpage. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. I now call on Mr. Tignor for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is National Volunteer Week from April 7 to 13, 2019. Established in 1974, National Volunteer Week has grown exponentially in scope each year since, drawing the support and endorsements of all subsequent U.S. Presidents, Governors, Mayors, and all other respected elected officials. National Volunteer Week is about inspiring, recognizing, and encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities. It's about demonstrating to the nation that by working together, in unison, we have the fortitude to meet our challenges and accomplish our goals. National Volunteer Week is about taking action, encouraging individuals and their respective communities to be at the center of social change, discovering and actively demonstrating their collective power to foster positive transformation. During the 2017-2018 school year, 168 schools, centers, and alternative high schools reported that 68,805 volunteers donated 640,524 hours of volunteer service to FCPS schools.
The Month of the Military Child. April is the month of the military child. It's a time to recognize our military and veteran-connected students for their service and sacrifice. Military kids sacrifice and serve our country in their own way. Here in Fairfax County, we are extremely fortunate to have over 11,000 students who are part of a military family as well as part of the Fairfax County Public Schools family. Our military-connected students bring a strong sense of community and wealth of life experiences to our schools. They are resourceful and adaptable, while living with numerous challenges presented by frequent moves, parental deployments, and a host of life transitions that often include reintegration and dealing with profoundly changed parents. The following are just a few of the challenges military children face: moving and starting over on an average of every one to three years; attending six to nine different schools from kindergarten through 12th grade; and multiple deployments of a parent. Throughout all of this, military children are resilient and patriotic. They know firsthand what it feels like to be the new kid, so they usually are the first one to welcome a new student to school. Celebrating the Month of the Military Child provides a powerful opportunity to raise awareness and build support to help these children meet the unique challenges they face. It is an opportunity to recognize and thank military children and youth for their heroism, character, courage, sacrifices, and continued resilience. Before I invite our military families to join the Board for a photo, I'd like to first show a very special video.
Hello, Fairfax County Public Schools. It's an exciting day in April, and we're celebrating the Month of the Military Child. We have Colonel Greenberg here from Fort Belvoir. Thank you for your service and your leadership here in Fairfax County. And we're at Orange Hunt Elementary with Principal Karen Tuttle and your administrative staff. Really excited. Almost a third of your families here are military-connected. Tell us a little bit about how you've supported the military here at Orange Hunt.
So, we really wanted to make this about a community, and we want people to feel when they're moving around that they really have a place that they feel like is home. And I think that's something that we really bring here. It really feels like a family.
Colonel Greenberg, you know, we're talking about Purple Star Schools. I think we had 14 this year. You came to the School Board and did a wonderful presentation. What does it mean to you to have so many Fairfax schools receiving this designation to support military families?
Yes, sir. Great question. So, I mean, as a garrison commander and a parent of a Fairfax County student, I understand the challenges our children have as they go and rotate into schools. You know, that causes a lot of stress on families. And so, just being able to know that our school, our Fairfax County schools, are so involved in trying to create an environment for our children to be welcomed into the school as they get there is so critical to the community. So, you know, us at Fort Belvoir, we truly appreciate everything that Fairfax County does for us. It's the Month of the Military Child. So, do you know we wear purple?
No.
You didn't know that?
No.
Do you know what the purple means?
No.
So, the purple represents all our service members. So, whether you're in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, Reserves, National Guard, we wear the purple to represent all our military families and all the challenges that our military families go through. So, we'll have a day, we'll designate it as Purple Day, and everyone get to wear purple, and we'll represent all our services.
Moving is a challenge for anybody at any time. When you're in the military, you move more than other students do. Yeah, how many times have you had to move?
I had to move three times.
Three times already? And what grade are you in?
Third grade.
Wow, so that's a lot of change. What, where have you been?
I've been to North Carolina, Germany, here, not moving back to Germany.
I really like that there's a lot of military kids here because then it's kind of easier to make friends.
Well, I'm, I think I'm pretty lucky because this is my first time moving.
Oh, wow. When did you come to Orange Hunt?
Um, at the end of winter break.
Oh, so you just got here. So, how do you like it? What are your first impressions?
Um, I like it because, like, the kids here are nice. I have ADHD, and it's really hard to move if you have ADHD because it's like, for me, I can't leave a place. It makes me feel alone, like I'm by myself. I really like it here, and it makes me feel like I am not in trouble for something that I can't help.
Right, that's pretty powerful. It isn't always an easy thing to be able to move, and I want you to know that we're going to be here to help you.
Okay.
Okay? April 10 is Purple Up Day, and we're excited about here in Fairfax County, everyone wearing purple to show their support for military children and military families.
At this time, I would like to invite Lieutenant Colonel Andy Wilbraham, who is here this evening representing the Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander Colonel Greenberg, who we just saw on film. Lieutenant Colonel Wilbraham is the parent of students at Robinson Secondary School. I would also like to invite all of our military families who are in the audience this evening to please join me at the dais for a photo with the Board. I now call on Mrs. Evans for a recognition of National Library Week.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am delighted to be reading this recognition tonight, and I first want to thank the school librarians of Fairfax County for their wonderful reception. In the library, at school, we were able to drop by and enjoy your company and some good food, and thank you so much for that. National Library Week and School Library Month, April 2019. National Library Week is a national observance sponsored by the American Library Association and libraries across the country each April. It is a time to celebrate the contributions of our nation's libraries and librarians and to promote library use and support. All types of libraries, school, public, academic, and special, participate. National Library Week is April 7 through 13, and the theme is Libraries = Strong Communities. Everyone belongs at your school library. School Library Month is the American Association of School Librarians' celebration of school librarians and their programs. Strong school library programs play an essential role in a student's educational career. And FCPS school librarians are dedicated to meeting the needs of all students through literacy development and relevant inquiry-based instruction that fosters curiosity, innovation, and lifelong learning, while strengthening students' growth in portrait of a graduate's skills. The School Board welcomes this opportunity to commend Fairfax County Public Schools librarians and to express its gratitude for the energy, knowledge, and vision that they tirelessly and unselfishly provide to the school system. At this time, I would like to invite the librarians who are in the audience to please join me at the dais for a photo with the School Board. Thank you so much for all you do.
I now call on Mr. Wilson for a resolution on the naming of the library at Bull Run Elementary.
Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather tonight, but thank you, Madam Chair. Before I read the resolution, I want to just say a couple of words because, as I read through the packet of materials that I, that was put together in preparation for tonight, it was an amazing amount of support for Sue Nieto. And one word sort of jumped out, was repeated many times, was the word joy. And what a wonderful thing it is to honor someone for a trait like joy. She clearly brought that joy every day, and it was infectious, and she became the spirit of Bull Run Elementary School, I suspect. And I think it is my honor to, tonight, make a resolution on, for this, for her, tonight, into naming the library at Bull Run Elementary School. After her, there's a saying that Francis de Sales used to say, and this is several hundred years ago, but he said, "Be who you are and be that well." And I think she must have been living out that every day, and she undoubtedly deserves this recognition. So, with that, I will read the resolution. Whereas Sue Nieto started working at Bull Run Elementary School on November 12, 1999, the year Bull Run Elementary School opened, being that she was the first library assistant, she made it a priority to know everyone personally. And whereas Sue played a vital role in fostering a love of reading with all students, she had an outstanding rapport with students, and her caring demeanor made each child feel welcomed and confident, knowing that she was there to assist them in the library. She always went the extra mile to make sure each person had a positive experience when visiting. And whereas Sue was essential in the development of Camp Read-A-Lot, a fun way for staff and parents to engage and collaborate with students by decorating the library as a campsite and reading to students during their scheduled library time. This program became an anticipated yearly event at Bull Run Elementary School as Sue recruited readers from staff to a variety of community members. And whereas Sue was instrumental in the organization of tasks for our business partner, the Sully Seniors, a group of seniors who regularly visited Bull Run Elementary School to assist teachers, staff, and the office with certain tasks supporting the education of students. And whereas Sue worked tirelessly, making the fall and spring book fairs a success by donating her personal time at the end of every workday, students were excited for their parents to come and see all the wonderful books on display, knowing that Sue had a wealth of information, a wealth of knowledge of the new books being offered. And whereas Sue was always involved with our volunteer, with Bull Run Elementary School volunteer luncheon, making it a memorable event for the numerous volunteers that frequent Bull Run Elementary School. When volunteers would come, they were always greeted with her smile. She was also a very conscientious person and maintained the highest level of confidentiality and integrity. She was Bull Run's finest. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names the library at Bull Run Elementary School the Sue Nieto Library to honor the kind and vibrant spirit in which Sue served our school and community for 18 years. I so move.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Schultz. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Yeah, just, just, I think that it's wonderful that we get to have this recognition, you know, this, this week and this month honoring our libraries and our librarians.
Ms. Schultz?
It's a, kind of like that's my old neck of the woods, and a lot of families I know value and treasure their time at Bull Run. It's, it's nice for us to have a memorial of somebody who emulated all of the integrity of a librarian and a person that reached out and was a member to, a member of our staff that parents could relate to and that read to children, because if you teach children to love to read, you open the world to them.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. And with that, I will take a vote. All those in favor? And that is unanimous.
Okay, okay, it wouldn't be a School Board meeting without photographs. So, at this time, I would like to invite Sue's husband, Al, son, Adam, Principal Pensler, Assistant Principal Blanchard, and the many staff who are here this evening to the dais for a photo with the Board.
I'm now going to hand the gavel over to Mr. Moon so that I can make a resolution.
I call on Mrs. Corvus-Anders for the resolution for Newington Forest's 35th anniversary.
Whereas Newington Forest Elementary School will proudly celebrate its 35th anniversary on on May 1, 2019, and its reputation for providing generations of students from a richly diverse community with an excellent academic foundation. And whereas for 35 years, Newington Forest Elementary School in Springfield has provided a safe, caring, inclusive, and supportive environment for all students to learn and grow by providing a rigorous education to students through general education, special education, and English for speakers of other languages programs. And whereas Newington Forest Elementary School faculty, parents, and PTA members work collaboratively together for high achievement in the classroom, community, and outside of the classroom by providing students with access to a wide array of extracurricular activities, including strings, band, chorus, steam, and other clubs, as well as after-school programs and other fun activities. And whereas the dedicated faculty of Newington Forest Elementary School adhere to best practices and strategies to support student-centered learning by placing a high emphasis on professional development for its teachers and administrators. And whereas Newington Forest Elementary School students follow the "night's care," pledge of making good choices, having a positive attitude, respecting self and others, and giving the best effort every day. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board honors Newington Forest Elementary School on the occasion of its 35th anniversary, commends the school on its history of providing educational excellence and enrichment opportunities to the students and community, and conveys its most heartfelt wishes for a successful anniversary celebration. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by?
Seconded by Ms. Palchek. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That's your job.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, would you like to speak to your resolution?
I would. There is no school that I, actually, every school we go into exhibits a joy as you walk in the door. There's something special about Newington Elementary, though. And the reason it's special is partially because of the design. Those of you who have actually visited the school will know that it is a school designed to bring the outside in. And so there's light everywhere and nice wooden, natural hues throughout the building. It's just warm and comforting and nurturing as you walk in the door. And when you walk in the door, you are always greeted by staff that exhibit those nurturing and warm characteristics. And so it is with great pleasure that I am offering this resolution tonight and thrilled that their principal, Angela Thompson, is here tonight to celebrate its anniversary. I do want to also add one little bit. It's 35 years old. It just got its first renovation, folks. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak just a second? If not any other board member? Let's vote on the resolution. All those in favor, raise your hand. So the vote is unanimous with Mrs. Schultz away from the table. The resolution passes.
At this time, I would like to invite Principal Angela Thompson, Assistant Principal Jennifer Min, School Counselor Laura Holsinger, and PTA members who are in the audience to please join me at the dais for a photo with the board.
Returning the gavel back to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Moon. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, six citizens have signed up to address the board, and we also have two video testimonies. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out tonight to speak. Our first speaker is Andrew Chin.
Hello, good evening. I'm here to speak on the issue of enforcing the two-hour homework policy, but I want to focus on a macro first before getting to the micro. So, give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. Teach a man fishing, you feed him for a lifetime. But here's my take on this. We are feeding our children, including me, the wrong way of fishing. In the proverb, the setting is binary. If you know how to fish, you're successful. If you don't know, and you have a lot of fish, you're not going to end up well. But in life, and what we're gifted for, it is not binary at all. You know, if you teach a computer, someone who's meant to be a computer programmer arts, he's not going to do arts. If you teach someone who's supposed to do art, that is meant to be an English teacher, he's not going to paint. So, I know what I've said is true, but there are a lot of things we know we have to get to that we simply don't have the technology or money for yet. So for example, I can certainly envision that in 50 or 30 years, the girl that knows she wants to study pure math, at least for her time in high school, will get a virtual AI teaching her mathematical theorems. But if we want to do that right now, you know, the government spending's got to go up, which means we've got to raise taxes, and the pay for the teachers is going to decrease, so all kinds of chaos happens. So to achieve the large macro and potential of we teach whatever students want to learn, which is arguably a better system than what we have today, we can't just go all in and radical. But there is one tiny thing, tiny thing that we can start off with right now, and that is by reducing and enforcing the two-hour homework policy. Busy work, busy work, busy work. I have no, you know, no reason to explain that anymore. Everybody dreads, and maybe you can hear from my voice. It is pretty useless. And here's another layer to why busy work and homework is not only useless, but detrimental. Most high schoolers don't like reading anymore, including me. And although discipline probably plays into how well one can focus on the subject without hating it, discipline is just not coming for me when I have to read assigned stuff. Same logic, when we get assigned chemistry labs that are found by nature, but when we see that three blank pages that is asking things absolutely ridiculously easy, we lose some of that motivation, and maybe that little lab will diverge someone who's supposed to be a chemist, you know, from that path. So, if we decide to enact the two-hour homework policy, man, first of all, this will be the most liked school board of all time and all history. But I know you guys care more than that, right? Something has got to get accomplished. So, here's what actually happens. A junior like me that usually have four hours of homework will get two hours of padding time. And at first, you know, they're going to waste it on, you know, video games, entertainment, but then maybe later on, 20% of them, or even just 1% of them, would be like, "Holy cow, I got time to do stuff now." And, and you know, the fishermen will become the fishermen.
Thank you.
The artist will become the artist, and that computer programmer will become the computer programmer. So, thank you.
Lisa Raj.
Honorable members of the board and members of the audience, thank you for letting me come here today. And I would like to further voice my opinion on behalf of the entire student community, as my fellow student Andrew had done as well. To repeat the Chinese proverb that said, "Give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. Teach a man to fish, you feed him for a lifetime." Now, my perspective on this is that our, our great county, FCPS, the problem is that FCPS is teaching students to overfish. See, FCPS is one of the best counties in the country in terms of the education system. Our students strive to be the best in every field. However, when you teach students to overfish, they are being overloaded with homework. When a farmer overfishes, what happens? The lake runs out of fish and the farmer starves. Similarly, when a student is overloaded with homework, what happens? They no longer have the will to learn. They no longer have the will to simply go to school every day and truly try their best. Now, all of us students, we are grateful for the education that we are provided with. However, we are willing to work with members of the board, members who have authority in our county to solve this problem. It is a fact that the FCPS County District has a two-hour homework policy for high school students. And this states that high schoolers cannot have homework exceeding two hours of time per day. However, no one knows of this policy. I ask students every day, "How much homework do you get?" Their answers are usually around three, four hours. The fact of the matter is that even teachers do not know that this policy exists. This is a problem because what is the point of having a policy if no one knows that it exists? Now, to further provide solutions that the student community has suggested to solve this issue, is that perhaps we need to increase communication between teachers. If teachers know how much homework the other teacher is assigning, they can perhaps adjust their own load. Some ways that we suggest that can be enacted is through integrated classes, classes which often have the same group of students being taught, such as history and English. These teachers can work together to report on their average workload per day through perhaps an online reporting site. And this way, teachers can communicate as to how much homework they're giving their students. Our next solution is to increase communication between teachers and students. Now, this can be very simple. This can be as simple as informal checks being given to the students where the student simply says, "Oh, so my homework last night lasted about one hour, 45 minutes, 40 minutes." This can be very simple, yet very effective. Secondly, we can simply have communication with the?
Ms. Raj?
Yeah.
You're going to need to wrap it up pretty quickly, if you don't mind.
So, just to finish this up, we'd like to provide a further few solutions as to how we can solve this issue. In-class review time will be essential because teachers will be given time to grade their own work while being able to talk to their students as to how to solve their homework. Now, to finally wrap it up, I'd just like to say that a student is an individual, an individual with time, with extracurriculars for their family, for their friends. Now, to truly be able to achieve this balance, it is absolutely essential that the school board discusses this issue and solve it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Melissa Bowden.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. I'm here to comment on the educator who played a role in a student receiving an award for an anti-Semitic art project. In this, I have two action items for the committee tonight. First, I'm a professor of political science. At the moment, I teach undergraduate and graduate level classes. I count it as a source of pride that at the end of the semester, my students do not know what my party affiliation and what my personal positions are. In fact, sometimes at the end of the semester, they say, you know, "What party are you with?" And I'll say, "Well, what do you think?" And I'm so proud that often, this class is evenly split. They don't know what my positions are. If I, who am passionate enough about politics to get a doctoral degree, teach political science for my vocation and engage in it in my personal time, if I can keep my personal feelings out of the classroom and teach my students how to think rather than what to think, so can other educators. Therefore, my first action item request to you is this. School board members, please remind your educators that it is their ethical responsibility to teach their students and not indoctrinate them through social justice projects. My second item. As a professor who has taught in institutions of higher education in Fairfax County as a taxpayer, I am a receiver of your educational product. Simply put, many of the students in my classes are not prepared for the rigors of upper-level academic work. Not knowing the difference between a common and proper noun, civil war, Cold War, that's common. Students do not know how to construct a sentence or a paragraph and think that a proper citation is copying and pasting a URL. These type of things, they should be middle school material at the latest. When I talk to my students about this, their responses are that they've always done it this way, no one has ever taken points off from them before. Again, guys, in this county, in this system, I'm a professor, and that's common. Hence, my second request to you this evening is this. Educate our children. Teach them math and reading with phonics. Assign the classics. Teach them history that provides context with true and fair representation of various points of view. Teach them the wonder of science beyond environmental issues. In closing, I'm asked the school board to remind educators that it is their jobs to teach children how to think, not what to think. Please, put a stop to the social engineering programs and social justice programs. Leave the installation of values to mom and dad at home where it belongs. Thank you for your time.
Brian Schneider. Is Mr. Schneider here? Okay. Diane Cooper-Goo.
Good evening. The past few weeks have been pretty grueling. While we know there have been reporting failures and loss of trust with regard to restraint and seclusion, what is important now is that we move forward with accountability and a new model for approaching behavior management. I want to thank those that have met with me on behalf of SEPTA and for the work that you have begun. Dr. Braybrand, Teresa Johnson, Sandy Evans, and Karen Keys-Gamara. And thank you to Chair Karen Corbett Sanders for her tireless work in addressing this issue. The work session on Tuesday was a good start, and it must be an ongoing process. However, the work session focused primarily on data reporting and handling crisis behaviors and very little on preventing behaviors in the first place. I was disappointed that the conversation morphed into a discussion of how to handle out-of-control children, when the reality of the children restrained and secluded is far more nuanced and complicated. According to our SEPTA survey, a large portion of the students who were restrained and secluded were done so as a means of discipline or behavior management, rather than through risk of physical harm. We received many stories of children restrained due to anxiety or impulsive behavior, such as shouting or hiding under a desk. The consequences of being secluded and restrained are devastating. The vast majority of parents reported increased frequency and severity of negative behaviors in their children post-seclusion. PTSD, anxiety, nightmares, and increased aggression were common. We need safe, non-traumatizing alternatives. And the other half of the story is just as important, the story of teachers. The high turnover rate for sped teachers has a direct relation The high turnover rate for sped teachers has a direct relationship to how special ed services are administered and how well those services offered are implemented. For our survey, staff are reporting burnout and are frustrated by increasing demands and decreasing supports. Sped teachers feel caught between upset parents and unsupportive administrators that don't understand needs of the special ed community. They identified that students are being placed in programs that are not appropriate for their needs. They do not have enough materials for their classrooms, and overall morale is low. After her school's administration refused to provide cleaning supplies and other basic materials to a CADD classroom, the teacher stated, quote, "We asked for support and got nothing. I spent over $2,000 in materials per class that year just so I could survive, and I almost didn't." Another said, "I completely understand the trauma kids and parents are experiencing with restraint and seclusion. However, teachers are acting out of desperation. No teacher wants to restrain or seclude a kid, but without more space, additional teachers, IAs, more adequate support from ADAs and behavior intervention teachers, appropriate placement and appropriate materials, et cetera, there's just sometimes no choice." They need support and a model that does not leave them feeling bad about their choices. I'm looking forward to the progress we can make when we all work together, teachers, administrators, parents, and students, and you, the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Campbell.
Good evening. The items on the agenda tonight, the Special Education Annual Plan and Report and Premier Workforce Goal, along with issues like the disproportionate discipline in restraint and seclusion, are all interconnected. It is imperative that this board and administration of FCPS understand that none of these issues can be adequately addressed if they are only addressed as single unrelated issues. As I sat in the work session on Tuesday, I was frustrated that there was so much discussion of de-escalation techniques while although valuable, yet virtually no discussion surrounding what FCPS can do to prevent a child from reaching a crisis point in the first place. I felt it was just treated as a given that children with, quote, "These kinds of needs," as it was characterized by someone, are just naturally going to reach these crisis points. Research has shown time and again that students who cannot communicate their thoughts clearly are more likely to engage in behavior that others deem problematic. Children with complex communication needs, whether those needs stem from physical disabilities, emotional disabilities, autism, et cetera, need an all-hands-on-deck approach to bridge the gap between their expressive language and their receptive language. I have testified repeatedly this year asking for staffing ratios for SLPs, ATS, and counselors to be addressed. We cannot continue to ignore these needs while focusing on training and solutions on de-escalation alone. Finding and addressing why a child reaches crisis stage must be part of the discussion. Improper placement and lack of appropriate supports are huge issues throughout the county. SECPTA's survey asks special education families, "Does your child receive appropriate support?" According to their survey report, only thirty-one percent believe that their school understands the students' needs, and only thirty-four percent believe that they are in an appropriate learning environment. More than fifty percent of respondents provided equivocal or negative responses to this question. Additionally, thirty-nine percent indicated equivocal or negative responses to whether or not their child had appropriate access to academic opportunities, and thirty-four percent indicated equivocal or negative responses to whether their child had appropriate access to social opportunities. The trust between FCPS and families of special education students was clearly broken long before the restraint and seclusion reports came to light. A few other issues that must be addressed. Special education training must be mandated for all staff, administrators, teachers, specialists, paraprofessionals, hearing officers, SROs, et cetera. It does not reach the people who need it when it is optional. Seclusion must be clearly defined. Room clears, as mentioned on Tuesday, are seclusion. The premier workforce goal should be amended to include data for special education employee retention specifically. What does the special ed retention rate look like compared to FCPS's retention rate overall? There is a growing number of greater needs is acknowledged on Tuesday, and yet the system is not increasing the available support accordingly. Families and teachers alike are crying out for more staff across all settings. You must look at special education holistically. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have two videos.
Mrs. Sanders, Mr. Moon, and members of the Fairfax County Public School Board of Education. My name is Patrick Corrigan, and I'm currently a senior at Langley High School. I would like to make a recommendation about improving the curriculum for the economics and personal finance course that is currently a requirement within the FCPS school system. The purpose of this course, in part, is to help students learn how to navigate the financial system and make informed decisions on topics such as banking and credit. It is the practical application of this course that I am most focused on. The current syllabus offers limited training on the realities that face our online generation when dealing with financial matters. The course provides only basic training on the use of a computer, outdated forms of financial transactions, and minimal coverage of online security practices. It does not represent the modern-day student. For example, there is a single brief module on the use of instant messaging, which merely talks about the danger of attachments, yet this is a fundamental tool used by most high school students daily. The reality of today is that the future graduates will be working in a virtual world which is constantly under attack. According to the 2018 FIS Global Banking Report, seventy-two percent of bank transactions are now done via mobile and online rather than at your local bank. According to the Thompson Reuters, in 2016, one in every sixteen U.S. adult were victim of identity theft, resulting in over $16 billion of losses. I would like to petition the school board to do a serious review and update to the EPF curriculum in the areas focused on online safety. In particular, modules EPF twelve and thirteen should be modified to include more relevant financial applications. It should include in-depth case studies that deal with the dangers of identity theft and a section on how to protect yourself from online threats, to include an understanding of products that offer online credit protections, the use of fraud alerts, credit report monitoring, and online credit protection. These are the types of topics that will enhance the EPF course and make it more relevant to the threats all of us are facing as we move even more into an online world. The threats are real and ever-changing. The EPF course is the perfect opportunity for the Fairfax school system to not only prepare our students to understand what it means to have financial responsibility, but also how to protect their credit, finances, and even their identity. I have completed the EPF course. I found many of the topics useful in preparing me for the next phase of my life. What it didn't do was help me understand just how dangerous the online world is and how to make sure I am taking the necessary steps to deter and hopefully stop the growing number of people that want to take what I have worked so hard to earn, my savings, my credit, and my reputation. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Braybrand and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby Jr. I have been teaching in Fairfax County Public Schools for more than twenty years, and for most of that time, I have been advocating for the concerns of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer staff, students, and family members. I want to talk tonight on how the strategic plan Goal Three impacts those efforts. Goal Three is a commitment to a premier workforce. And one of two areas of focus for 2018 through 20 is that FCPS will recruit, hire, and retain exceptional employees. I will tell you that your exceptional employees pay attention to what you do as a board. They care about how you treat students and staff who may not be the most privileged in our society. That is why your writing an amicus brief in Gavin Grimm's case against Gloucester County Public Schools about bathroom use for transgender students is so important. I've read the brief. It is a clear statement that the Fairfax County School Board values and respects transgender students. When you show that you value transgender students, it becomes clear to everyone that you value all students. Transgender people do not always feel welcome in all places in American society. You have made clear that trans people, indeed all people, are valued members of the FCPS community. Excellent employees notice this and will come and work for or continue to work for an employer that values all people. Thank you for doing this.
Now, we come to student representative matters. I call on Mr. Tigner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Ms. Schultz is away, but I'm glad to see her back. I'm not sure if she was back two weeks ago, but I missed her. Yeah, is it on? Yeah, okay, perfect. I spoke away from it. But either way, I would like to thank and congratulate all the student speakers who spoke tonight. We had three of them, and it's absolutely amazing. Regardless of what you're speaking about, the student voice needs to be heard. And if you have something to share and you're student watching, please come talk to us because we're ready to listen to your voice. Specifically, two students spoke tonight about the two-hour homework policy. The topic, main topic, besides, you know, making sure one knows about it, is that I cannot, and students cannot, have a conversation with their teachers about homework. There is a stigma that it is normal to pull all-nighters doing homework, and that is the only way to be successful, is to push yourself to the limit and work your butt off in every single class, no matter if you're passionate about it or not. And now, good work ethic is an important thing, but I think that can be learned not by spending all-nighters every single day of the week. Right? So, this isn't always also a load on the students. This is also a load on our teachers. Teachers feel pressured to provide this homework and ask their students to do this homework because they need to make standards and push themselves and keep FCPS the top of the top and the best of the best. But I would like to emphasize that more doesn't always mean it's better. Even in the wording itself, it says, "Quality over quantity." If there's anything you take away from that, it's quality over quantity. I would love, love to talk a little bit about NSBA. So, National School Board Association, NSBA, they had a conference in Philadelphia last weekend, and I was extremely lucky to attend. It was one of the coolest couple of days of my life. Thank you guys so much for letting me go, by the way. And I went from workshop to workshop, learned what students thought about things. I met a couple of student reps, and it was really cool to see their perspectives and the roles they played in their own communities. And I met countless impassioned board members from across our country. And it was really, really, really nice to see how much board members care about doing their job as best as possible and making our education for students across the country as best as we can. I wanted to talk a little about one of the workshops that I went to. It was presented by Shane Feldman. I don't know if anybody went to it? No, awesome. Okay, so that's good, so I can tell you guys about something. So, this is from a kid. He's the founder and CEO of Count Me In, which is the largest youth-led foundation in the world. They're 114 countries, they've done $2.6 billion of service. And he went to present about a study that they did. This is one of the coolest studies I've ever heard. He went back to high school for two years as a twenty-five-year-old. And he looks very young, right? And every single time he went and visited high school, people would always ask him for his late pass. Right? So, he realized that, hey, maybe I can pull this off. So, he went back to high school for two years, and he shared with us the experiences and the people he met and basically what it was to go back to high school nowadays. So, the things he focused on were the kids he met. And I would like to bring forward the three kids. Of course, their names are changed, he changed them too. Shawn, Jesse, and Kimmy. Shawn, your typical, you know, student advocate. He was all honors classes, clubs, sports. He seemed like the best kid he could be, wasn't an at-risk student. And Adam had identified him as a stable kid, but he didn't have a home life. His parents actually kicked him out of the house two years ago. He lived on his own. And he was facing, he had no direction in life. And that was Shawn. Then there was Jesse. Jesse was a quiet kid, but extremely smart. Was suffering from depression, and she just sat there in class, nobody knew about it. But through becoming her friend, he sort of began to understand her story. Then there was Kimmy. And Kimmy was sort of the sadder part. Kimmy was one of the, he described her as the warmest person he'd ever met, a very warm soul, and the nicest person he's ever met. But one day, when they, once he became friends with her, they were sitting after drama class, and she pulled up her sleeve, and she had a cut in her arm. And she said, "I tried again last night." And he said that was one of the most impactful moments because when, the first day he came there, and if we walk through a school, or any of you walk through a school, the stories about what happens to these kids when they go home and when they aren't, you know, presenting what they're doing right out in public is absolutely amazing. And I'll, let's put this into context because these are three kids. But what is important to understand is this is on a three-kids-in-a-country basis. There is a Shawn, there's a Jesse, there's a Kimmy, not in every district, not in every school, but in every classroom. And if we haven't found them, then we're not looking hard enough. I have a friend, actually, named Caroline. She's a student leader, she works extremely hard, she doesn't have any guidance in her life. Parents are divorced. Right? That's my Shawn. I actually have a Kimmy, who's my Jesse. Kimmy is one of the nicest people I've ever met in my life, but she doesn't think she's very smart. And I don't know why, because every single time she opens her mouth, it either tears up my day or is something I never thought of before. And then I have an Olivia, who is extremely close to me, and she attempted suicide in eighth grade and still has the scars on her arm to show for it. But those scars aren't just physical, they're also mental. And what I see in our, in our county by the fact that we don't know every one of these three examples in our classes across the county is that we aren't searching enough to identify these at-risk students. Just recently, we actually had one of those surveys that was passed out, at least at our school, to identify students at risk, and it was four questions on depression. And you would say yes or no to them if you felt sad, if you seriously considered suicide and stuff like that. And it was okay, but, you know, only the kids who had been determined at risk were pulled out of class, and the questions were very binary. So, if you fall somewhere in the middle, you wouldn't identify. Or if you don't feel your problems are really viable or that you can vouch for them, you would just say no. And I talked to my counselor at my school, and we shared our concerns is that it just plays in the stigma that having a mental health issue and seeking help is an odd thing because you're pulled out of class. And it's very obvious why, because it's ten minutes after you've done your survey. So, there was another workshop there with Teen Hope, and they just served an example. But I think we can revamp our screening process to identify students at risk. Just in a two-year basis, they'd actually halved the students identified at risk just by identifying them and setting them up with people who could help them out, with counselors, with therapists. They identified, I think it was thirty, thirty percent of their students, right? Who showed at-risk symptoms. Right now, eighty percent of kids who are at risk are left unidentified. And those are the eighty percent that we should be searching for. So, I would love to work with any of the board members or anybody who'd like to advocate for the committee on that because I think that's something that we should really push for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. We're now going to have a presentation on the Local Special Education Annual Plan and Report for 2019-2020. I call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. We have an annual plan that we present or that we are required to share each year or submit each year for the federal government's IDA dollars. And Teresa Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, will share that presentation and take any questions. Thank you.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to share this annual plan. Typically, we don't get to do a presentation, so thank you for the opportunity. FCPS is required to complete this plan on an annual basis for federal reporting. The plan outlines how FCPS will utilize the $37 million awarded to us through the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act 2004. The presentation, excuse me. The presentation will cover the various components of IDEA plan, including an overview of special ed programs and maintenance of effort, looking at the proposed use of IDEA funds, showing how FCPS special ed programs impact general education students, reviewing the IDEA financial summary for 2019-2020, and going over key dates in the plan and the timeline. Again, this presentation only addresses the special ed annual plan and report of the $37 million IDEA award of the funds. On the screen, you will see a list of the actual plan components. The Special Education Annual Plan formalizes the agreement between FCPS and the Virginia Department of Education for implementing federal and state laws and regulations that govern special education programs. Each year, our division superintendent is required to certify FCPS's annual plan, attesting to the development of local policies and procedures for the provision of special education programs that comply with the requirements of IDEA 2004 and the Virginia Board of Education Regulations. The annual plan, which is due to BDOE in May 2010, excuse me, on May 10th, 2019, reports FY 2018 or school year 2017-18 actual numbers that you will see highlighted on the slide. FCPS provides services in the areas of learning and emotional disabilities identified in FCPS- identified in FCPS as Category A services, and also provides services for autism, intellectual disabilities, non-categorical elementary, and physical disabilities, also known as Category B services. Services may be provided for less than 50% of the school day, Level 1, or 50% or more of the school day, which is considered Level 2 services. Other services are services provided for preschool special education, deaf and hard-of-hearing, vision impaired, and speech and language impaired students. Related services are categorized as therapy services, assistive technology services, adaptive physical education services, audiological services, and career and transition services. On this slide, you see the FY 18 special education population compared to overall student population and by surrounding jurisdictions. FCPS's special education population is approximately 14% of the total student population. This is up from 13.7 in the previous year. As you can see on the chart, we have the third-highest percentage of special ed students in the local area. One of the planned components requires that we report IDEA activities for FY 2018. Part of the reporting requirement includes providing early identification and preschool services information. This slide depicts information about the school year activities, including preschool evaluations, all K-12 initial evaluations, reevaluations, and eligibility data, in addition to other components of evaluations such as psychological, social case histories, and speech and language. FCPS conducted a little over 1,500 preschool evaluations, finding 1,397 students eligible. Total unduplicated evaluations totaled 14,139, with additional components of the evaluation totals noted in the last box to include psychological, social case histories, and speech and language. This pie chart displays the FCPS fiscal year 1718, school year 1718 special education expenditures totaling over $550 million. Special education funding comes from federal, state, and local sources, with local funding providing 84.5% of funds. State funding provides 8.3%, and federal funding provides 7.2%. While the shares across the three funding sources are fairly consistent with prior years for fiscal year 18, local funding reflects an increase of 0.4% from the previous year, and state revenue reflects a 0.4 decrease. Federal revenue is unchanged at 7.2%. The FY 18 IDEA award of $37 million reflects a $1.4 million increase over the FY '17 award, or about 3.9%. Maintenance of effort is the requirement that school divisions spend from state and local funds an amount equal to or greater than the amount of special education prior, in the prior year. The FCPS has consistently met special education MOE requirements. In addition, FCPS spends significantly more on special ed than what is received from federal and state contributions. The next slide describes coordinated early intervening services, or CEIS. FCPS voluntarily sets aside 15% of IDEA funds to support students who are currently not identified as needing special education or related services. CEIS funding serves general education students who are struggling academically. These early interventions are intended to help prevent students from later requiring special ed services. CEIS primarily funds staff, such as reading teachers or the dyslexia specialist, in addition to an attendance specialist, to just name a few. Instructional materials may also be provided. Struggling general ed students benefit directly, and data is collected to measure student progress. For school year 1920, we project that our annual award for FY '20 will be the same, about $37 million. Therefore, the CEIS set-aside amount would be approximately $5.6 million. Again, the amount of the CEIS set-aside represents 15% of the $37 million IDEA award. FCPS also has to set aside $0.2 million, referred to as the proportionate set-aside, to provide special ed and related services to parentally-placed private school children with disabilities. This amount is determined by a VDOE formula. The chart on this next slide represents the breakdown of how FCPS spends IDEA funds. FCPS uses 99% of the IDEA funding it receives to supplement positions that provide services to special education students and for coordinated early intervening services that help general ed students before they are identified for special education. For FY 18, IDEA funded 410.4 positions. 97% are school-based positions, including teachers and instructional assistants. VDOE does impose an indirect cost, currently 1.3% on all IDEA expenditures. This final chart is a summary of how IDEA awards will be allocated for FY '20. On the chart, 611 identifies K-12 funds and 619 preschool award amounts. You'll see the award amounts in the orange on the bottom line. The CEIS annual plan focuses on students in K-12, so the $5.6 million for CEIS, again, will be fully funded for the Section 611 or K-12 budget. Just as a reminder, the proportionate set-aside funds are all set aside for privately-placed students with special school year 1920 is $152,479, which is the minimum that FCPS has to set aside for the parentally-placed students with disabilities. After accounting for CEIS and the proportionate set-aside amount, allocations for services for parentally-placed children, 100, excuse me, $31 million of the $37 million is projected for IDEA funding for 1920, which will be used for special education activities. In closing, you'll note the timeline on the screen. The special education plan is on the board's schedule for action on April 25th and due electronically to VDOE by May 10th. Thank you again for the opportunity to present the information. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do any of my colleagues have any questions regarding the report? Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Hines.
Yes, thank you. I don't have any questions specifically right now of the presentation, though I do appreciate you bringing this to the board tonight. But I did want to just share with my colleagues that for many of us, if not all of us, this will seem unusual. As I've served on the board for seven years, we've not done this before, to my knowledge. But Ms. Corbett Sanders and I were very fortunate to meet with some advocates who brought this to our attention, that this is something very important we do every year. And we realized that it would be very valuable for the board, as well as for the public, to provide and elevate this important work. And so, we appreciate that staff pulled this together and brought this to us here this evening. We will be having a work session on it so that board members will have a chance to review the report and have discussion, I believe, on this. Or is it just we're going straight to a vote?
We will be, we have an opportunity tonight to talk about it, but there is not an intention for a work session because we had just put this on, and our work session was full for the next session. So if you do have questions, colleagues, about what is, what's been presented tonight, I would encourage you to do so.
Okay, so progress sometimes comes in small steps.
This is true.
So, I would, I would say that it would be my hope, and colleagues, when we vote on this on April 25th, because this is new business for this evening, I will be putting forward a follow-on motion that the board consider bringing this as an annual report and presentation, that we would incorporate a work session as well. It doesn't always have to be a long work session, though we usually make them that the case. But I do think that this impacts a large number of our students and certainly is a very significant investment of staff and resources. And so, the more we can become knowledgeable about how we're doing and where we can continue to partner with the superintendent in our growth in this area. And then it also provides the community, who've been so invested in this work, to be able to dialogue with us. And so, that would be my hope going forward. But in the meantime, to our community, especially SEPTA, who has been so engaged in this work, please do communicate with the board before our vote on April 25th. Obviously, I know Superintendent Braybrand and Teresa Johnson want to hear your input as well. But since the board's going to put its vote to it, please let us know if there's anything that you want to draw to our attention. And again, I want to thank the SEPTA leaders for helping raise this to our attention. And I hope this provides, again, greater partnership between the board, the superintendent, and our community.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Hines?
Yes, hi. Thank you very much. And of course, we never want this conversation to be just about funding. But there are some things that stand out in this presentation that I think maybe we could give a little context to the community for. And so on Slide 7, we have the breakdown of local versus state versus federal participation in the funding. And so this is all the funding that we have for our special education needs. Is that what this slide represents? No, this just represents the funding that we receive. Well, oh, you're asking earlier. So the whole, yeah, I'm sorry, the Slide 7, the whole pie is what we spend on special ed. Okay, thank you. So what we see is that the federal government is providing us about 7.2% when we know that in fact by federal statute, they're supposed to be providing, is it 40%?
40%.
40%, and they've never done that. And now we're, I think this is the lowest that I've seen. Well, I don't know, maybe for us, it's always been about this much. So, that's an advocacy point for, you know, our community. And then the state, I've never really taken a look at the state's share, so this is helpful. That 8.3%, that is lower than the state's share of our total operating budget, which I think is closer to 20%. Am I right? 23%. So the state is funding our special ed needs at a considerably lower rate than they fund the rest of our needs, is what this looks like. And then also, I was looking then at, so if we look at the total, which you said is about $550 million, that works out to be about $1 out of every $6 that we spend? Is that about right? We have a $3 trillion budget, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Three, I'm sorry, a $3 billion budget. So, and then finally, I had a question on Slide 11. One of the bullets describes, make sure I'm on the right slide. The, VDOE imposes an indirect cost, the second bullet, on all IDEA expenditures. Could you explain that a little bit more? I'm going to ask our, my coordinator for finance, Jackie Prentice, to come up and share a little bit about that. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. The indirect cost is a rate that the state provides us. It's currently 1.3%. So for grants, it's for things that cannot be directly attributed to any particular grant. It's more like an overhead or indirect that's applied to all of the expenditures that we submit. So, we receive the new rate each year from the state, and it's been 1.3% for the last two years.
So I just want to make sure I understand. Are we sending that to the state, or are we getting that from the state?
No, we, when we submit our reimbursements, we add on that 1.3%. It's for them, they recognize that there are going to be costs that are not attributed directly to the grant. So, those costs are calculated to be 1.3%.
Okay.
They're administrative, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a processing fee essentially, right? That the IDEA funds go to the state of Virginia, and then they charge 1.3% processing before they send us the funds?
No, we, they look at it as costs that we would incur that are not directly attributable to the grant, but they add or calculate that it's roughly 1.3%.
No, so, so VDOE then is, is basically funneling the federal grant money to us, and they add on to what they give us, this 1.3%. So it's 1.3% is state money.
Right, but we have to take it out of the total award amount. It's not on top of the $37 million. So we have to back that out before we start to allocate across CEIS and PSA. So, it's the 37, bottom line doesn't change, but we take out 1.3%, which will be for the indirect cost, and then we look at what else we can afford with the grant award.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Palchuk?
Thank you. And I appreciate this, and since it's the first time we're seeing this, which I'm very glad. Thank you to all who helped to bring here. I know there are some questions for us, but also to clarify for the public. I guess I'm looking at Slide, oh, I lost it, 4. The numbers, and I apologize if you did go through this, but I did just want to make sure it's clear. And I'm understanding it correctly. So these are the total number of students we've served. Is that correct for each year?
The unduplicated count, that last line there, 26,900.
So this is, all of these are enrollment numbers?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And so, we're seeing generally, there was, there was an increase through the 19-year, and now for 2020, there seems to be a slight decrease in some, some if not most of the categories. I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, for 2020. Except for the undupli, so I'm, I'm looking at Category A. We've, we've had a decrease. In Category B, there's an increase. And in, um, other services, there's a decrease. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly.
If you're looking at the chart, yes. So for this year, we've increased in our Level 1, as well as our Level 2 services for Cat A. And we've also increased in our Cat B services for Level 1 and Level 2.
Okay, perfect. And then, at the bottom, there's a, a number 3, the total number of students receiving one or more special ed services. Am I missing this? I don't see a 3 anywhere.
At the very bottom.
Oh, I see. On the, on the duplicate, okay, very small. On the unduplicated, okay. And so, okay, and so my question is, as we're going into the next year, do, right now, so 18 is highlighted because we're looking at, the numbers in this presentation are 1718. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so then, as we're going into next year's budget, can we, are we expecting similar percentages? I guess it's not a huge difference in funding because the numbers aren't changing too much. But generally, are we seeing, I guess, per pupil or per unduplicated enrollment count? Are we seeing from, in the 18, 19, and 20 fiscal years, approximately similar total funds being appropriated for each student?
This, I'll have to ask Lee Burden about that. But for the purposes of our IDEA grant, we're expecting the same amount of money, $37 million.
Similar amount, and so...
Right, a total amount. We'd, I'd have to refer or talk to Lee Burden and ask her.
Okay, so we're expecting the similar, similar amounts. Well, I don't know exactly how it would be proportioned out, but in some services, we have less students than in others that maybe require more funds. We're actually seeing more students.
That's correct. And it may fluctuate. Our numbers have increased significantly, significantly in our Category B Level 2 services over the course of the last 10 years.
Okay. And just to be clear, right, the, the, I guess, per-service amount then generally has gone down? The, how much we're getting per student, if the funding is staying pretty level, the percentage, I think that's what Pat was getting at before.
And I'd have to, we'd have to go back and look at historically what it looks like. But over the last couple of years, it's, it's stayed.
Yeah, I feel like maybe it was around 12%, but I may be throwing that out of somewhere. So it's looking like 8% now. So that would be, if at some point we could see, because I remember a couple of years ago trying to look at it, I thought it was around 11 or 12%. Just so we can kind of see, yes, where the changes have been over the years. So I think that is helpful to see if there truly is a decline in the percentage per student. But this is, I know, a little bit of, first time we're looking at this, so a lot of information we're going through. So that's helpful, and would be nice to see the comparison of the years where, I guess we have 1718, 1920, if it'd be possible to just be able to track over time the state and federal funding that's come in for those years. That'd be great. And then my only other point of clarity, I know some of this is internal lingo, so for, for us and for the public, on Slide 9, and I know in the report also lists, could you define what LEA stands for? I don't think it stands for Ms. Skorpski.
Oh, LEA, Local Education Agency.
Okay, so that would be us, that would be FCPS, correct?
Yes, American Public Schools.
Yeah, if we could define that, that would be great. All right, thank you. I know there's still a lot more to go through, but this is very helpful to start to, to put it all together. I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Just a couple of questions regarding some of the numbers that I see in your presentation. And first of all, first of all, I must express my dismay at federal funding being only 7.2%. As I recollect, I listed at one point that it was 16%, as much as 16%. Now it is 17%. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
I don't know historically, Mr. Moon, I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay, quite disappointing and quite surprised it is that low. I mean, we got a lot of lobbying work ahead of us to work with our congressman. And then, another question is, that 7.2% is translated to be about $40 million, and that number compared to what I see on, whether there's any relationship with that number with the number that I see on slide number 10, which is $37 million. Proposed use of IDEA 19, 20 funds, $37 million.
Jackie, come up here.
The 37 million is the award amount for the IDEA. The 45 is what we project to receive from the state.
The 40, 7.2% is a federal funding, which is about 40, 40 million, 39 million.
Correct. The 7.2 in fiscal year 2018, that is the amount that we received.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. It's a fiscal, yeah, fiscal year 18 versus fiscal year 19. And in fiscal year 19, we are even expecting less?
No, we would expect, let's see, we have the same, that we would expect the same, because we're expecting the award amount to be identical.
Okay, I'm still not understanding that this difference between 40%, 40 million on page, slide number seven, for federal funding, and 37 on page 10.
We're expecting the contribution rates to be roughly the same. In 2017, it was 45.4 million, 8.7%. For fiscal year 18, it was 45.6 million, 8.3%. So that's the .4 percentage point decrease that was mentioned in the presentation. But it's roughly the same from the state each year when we look at...
From federal, not state.
Oh, from federal, it's been consistently 7.2%. For what we're showing, based on our annual school report, we show that...
Okay, I'll do my, I'll do my calculations maybe after the meeting, but let me ask you one more question. Over the total special education funding of expenditure of $550 million, is that what I saw?
Yes.
And 99% of that goes into paying for salaries and benefits of people actually providing special services, special education services, no?
No. The 99% that's referenced in the presentation has to do with the $37 million award of IDEA.
So there are $550 million. In addition to a special education provider, let's say, teachers, could be psychologists and others, does it also include logistical expenditure such as buses, bus drivers, custodians, whether full-service workers, utilities?
The 550.6 million for the entire program cost includes all of those things.
Yes.
The award, the 37 million, is pretty much all personnel. We have a small, I guess roughly $19,000 that's used to pay for a subscription, but everything else would be personnel costs plus the 1.3% indirect cost.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. It is, it is very helpful for us to get the big picture of where we are. And again, I'm just going to follow up on some of my colleagues with the funding. Karen Corbett Sanders and I both have served in the role at the Federal Legislative Liaison for the National School Boards Association Advocacy Network. One of their top priorities for the past five years has been full funding of IDEA. We have, both of us individually, and I'm not sure if any other board members have, but several times, we have gone and met with Senators Caine, Senator Warner, Congressman Conley, and Congressman Byer about this. There seems to be an overall reluctance to, to add to this. Ms. Hines was right, it's about 40% where they were supposed to be funding. I know there is some momentum, but I would like to charge this board with an advocacy effort to work with our electeds in Virginia to press forward, because I don't think we have been as robust in our advocacy on this level as we need to be. And I don't know, Ms. Corbett Sanders, how we can do that if we're not going to have a work session on this, but maybe I, I think it's, it's important because NSBA has a lot of information on how to be out there, and there are many. They say on average, states get, localities get about 15%. So we're getting half of what they're even saying, let alone not even where we're supposed to be at 40%. And this has been, you know, something that...
Since 1967, when it was adopted.
Exactly, exactly. I wasn't sure how many years, Ms. Corbett Sanders, for those of you who hadn't, hadn't heard, it's been since 1967 when it's been adopted. So there's been literally nothing done. And I think as a board, if that could be one of our advocacy outreach efforts to really bring this home, that would be helpful to the many things, even though we do invest a lot. I think we're well aware that our needs are great, and if we would have the funding dedicated, or asked, that is supposed to be dedicated to us from the federal government, think about where we could be and what better systems we could put in place. So I make that challenge to the board, and I will confer with the chair and vice chair as to how to best make that happen. At the very least, I would like to maybe start with an advocacy letter from the entire board and begin there.
I would remind Ms. Darnak Kofax that this is part of our legislative agenda, and so we certainly can build on that, and I will call on Ms. McLaughlin in a couple of moments when she has a go back, and I'm sure she'll be addressing this. Ms. Strauss, or no, Mr. McElveen, please.
Thank you. I join my colleagues in expressing our appreciation for the presentation. I believe this is the first time at the board table we've seen this report, and I'm wondering why it is coming forward for board action? If someone on the board could explain that, why we would be voting?
In the past, this has always been on our consent agenda, and after a conversation that Ms. McLaughlin and I had with representatives from SEPTA, we, frankly, I, the two of us decided to try to pull it off of the consent agenda. And then I asked Dr. Brabran if it would be possible for this to be presented so that we could have a conversation at the board table. As I mentioned, it's typically a consent agenda item.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, because this is the first time we're seeing this, and it is very helpful to get the financial information. I will say, and this is something we've, we've talked about as a board separately, but I do think it would behoove all of us to go back to the days of the OEs, particularly in the area of special education. It was really, you know, OEs provided us an opportunity for engagement with each LT member in their area of expertise, and really to see what was going on in the departments. And with, as, as well-oiled as the strategic plan process and those presentations have been, as a board, I feel like we're missing so much of the pie now. And so I think, you know, special services is certainly one area where we don't have that kind of engagement, and this is at such a high level that it really, again, we're missing a lot of it. So I do hope that our board can have that conversation, and I'm sure LT is gritting their teeth at the thought of, of having to go back to the days of those presentations. But I, I think it, we, we got a lot more information back in those days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen.
If I, if I could, Chairman Corbett Sanders?
Please, go ahead, Dr. Brabran.
I would just say, you know, we welcome, I was just asking Ms. Strauss actually the history, I remember when I was growing up through Fairfax that we had something like that, and I think we can go back, take a look, and look at like a strategic OE, what are the strategic data points that the board needs to see? The annual report, this is great because frankly, this lets you even have that broader policy discussion. Every school district in the Commonwealth of Virginia is getting shortchanged by the federal government around IDEA. This is the biggest unfunded mandate going on right now in the federal government, and it's not fair to the kids, it's not fair to the families, it's not fair for school districts, like Fairfax or any other school district in Virginia. I faced this in a smaller school district when I was superintendent, I'm back here in a larger district, and the kids, you can see the needs, particularly Cat B Level 2, are some of the resource, most resource of, resource intense supports needed. You're seeing growth in those areas, and you're seeing the same percentages and flat federal revenues. So I absolutely support some of what the other board members have talked about, is more advocacy. We've got to fill that gap.
Ms. Strauss, please.
Thank you. I do thank you very much for this report. It is, it is good to be able to see a high-level presentation in past years while we've had the entire report that's many, many pages. And this way, we get to actually focus on probably the, the most important pieces of it, so thank you very much. What is the funding source for private day schools and residential placements where some of our, our children with extensive needs are, are served?
Those costs are covered a little over 50% from this, at the state level, and the rest of it is locally funded. The FCPS covers transportation costs.
So it's 50% from the state?
Yes, a little over 50%.
And 50% local?
Approximately.
And nothing federal?
No.
Wow. And, right, okay, and this is, this is the CSA funding, right?
Correct.
Comprehensive Services.
That's correct.
And this was, I believe, this agreement 20 years ago? Delegate Dillard was the one who invented it. Okay, and so that remains the same, Jim Dillard. Is that, is that a separate appropriation from the state?
I'm not sure, I'd have to look into that, Jackie.
I guess, I could just ask that as a, just an informational question, if somebody could answer it at some point, not in detail, but just how CSA is funded, is that just simply a, a formula-driven appropriation from the state? Because it is, it is a concern for all school divisions as well, and for our children who need that extra care.
Dr. Brabran?
I know I don't usually try to chat, but just on this one for the conversation. CSA funding is going up across every school district because school districts don't have the funds to support the kids. They're, they're, in some cases, having to be put in private placements, and CSA is having to cover those costs. The state is starting to look at the, the Comprehensive Service Act because of the spending, but it's all back to, there's not the funding to support the needs of the kids. And so frankly, there is need at the state to look at that with an eye to looking at what the kids' needs are in providing the services. Fairfax County schools and Teresa and her team have worked hard to have many of those students who in other districts would be served in CSA programs to be in the FCPS family. We've worked very hard to do that. But the bottom line is, there really is a funding issue at the federal level and at the state level, the federal level for IDEA and at the state level for the CSA dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Before I go to go backs, I did want to talk a little bit about this, because I think this is a really important report for all of us to see and to understand. But I don't want us to lose the focus of what this is all about. And it's about how can we best serve the needs of each and every one of these children? And so the commitment, I believe, is from Fairfax County to make sure that we serve these needs. The question is, are we serving them in the best possible manner? And so there are a couple of things. One is on the chart where we lay out different categories of students. And I'm a little confused, and I'm going to build on what Ms. Palchak mentioned a few minutes ago. If we look at FY '18, we have category A students being 15,085. Fiscal year 19, which is our current year, being 15,278. But then in fiscal year 20, we're estimating that those numbers are going down, not by a whole lot, but still by, you know, almost 60 kids. Then we go to the next in the Cat B, and we also see, we had a growth between 18 and 19, a pretty substantial growth, 400 students, and then a smaller growth in 20. So is that because the Cat A students, now we're realizing they're more likely to be Cat B? And then you go to the third area, which is the other services. And in that area, we have 13,157 this year. We are, or last year, 13,202 this year, and then we're dropping down to 12,829. And so I'm wondering, with the movement between categories and the number of students, are we seeing that we're identifying kids earlier and therefore able to address some of their needs so that they don't move into higher needs categories? Are there areas where we haven't identified early enough, and so we're having to provide difference words? Can you just address the landscape a little bit there?
I think it's a variety of things, in addition to birth rates, and who, who are the cohorts of students that are moving through in their age? We had several years of large bumps in preschool, big, large cohorts of preschool students that have been coming through, and I know we're seeing a drop in that, in that rate. So it could be a variety of things that, that take place.
Okay, that's very helpful. Additionally, I have another question regarding the VDOE 1.3%. How does that compare to the other jurisdictions in the state of Virginia?
There's a chart, let's see. We see that some jurisdictions such as Staunton have 6.5% as their restricted rate. That's one of the highest ones. And then, you know, so we are at 1.3%. We are lower than some of the other jurisdictions. It's all, it's a wide variety of rates here, the lowest being roughly 0% in Middlesex County versus our 1.3%. But...
And how much flexibility do you have in spending that 1.3%?
It's, it's what we are reimbursed, it's 1.3% on each dollar that we spend. It's a rate that's calculated on top of the expenditures that we submit for reimbursement. So it's, in terms of flexibility, the money is already spent. These are expenditures that we're getting reimbursed for out of the grant.
Okay. If somebody could provide the board with a little more detail on how that works, I think that would be very helpful. And then the last piece, the CEIS funding, which is 15%? And that's really our flexibility in addressing the needs of students that are not Cat A, Cat B, or other specified. It's for the general ed needs?
Correct.
Is there any way that we can use some of that funding for the training that we've been talking about over the past couple of weeks of really focusing in on providing all of our teachers and IAs in our general ed programs, as well as in our special ed programs? The training on behavioral... The training on behavioral interventions, communications techniques, de-escalating techniques, things like that?
Yes, training is part of the plan. We have a CEIS annual plan that's usually prepared and submitted in the summer. So based on what we have already had approved, we do have training in there.
And how much training do we know? And what type?
Some of the professional development that we have offered has been related to our responsive instruction, which we now call multi-tiered systems of support, some of our restorative justice practices, also some of our alcohol and drug awareness programs. So it's been a variety. And it's specified in the CEIS, and we can certainly get you a copy of the CEIS plan so you can see that.
I think that would be very helpful.
Sure.
And is there a portion of it that does trauma-enforced?
Informed.
I, thank you, I know, I'm sorry. Trauma-informed students in their families?
I don't recall off the top of my head whether we've done that in the past, but I...
That's not in the last plan, no.
Okay.
It could be something we could explore.
I would appreciate you all exploring that a bit. So I do have one go-back, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to pick up on something that Mr. McElveen had said. I had noted in the beginning as well that, yes, he's correct. We haven't ever had this before. And when you were referencing the OEs, known as our operational expectations, in case those in the audience aren't sure what we were talking about, I also agree with you that it has kind of prevented the board from having this ability to engage in more of the oversight that we do still also have a responsibility for in terms of educational operations. The one thing that I would say, because again, I love that we're trying to continuously improve on the board's understanding, because this, again, as noted earlier, was on our agenda. Like, we formally put our vote onto this and endorsement to it. And so I would just say that while the PowerPoint presentation has been very helpful, as board members, you'll look and see what's posted on Board Docs, it's the application. And it says application and report, and then it's the PowerPoint. PowerPoint is a really good start, but the application, the report itself, actually doesn't tell the layperson much of anything. And so I almost would say that maybe as a next step, again, being mindful, Dr. Brabran, we talk about workload, workload for students, workload for teachers, workload for central offices as well. Please know I'm not asking to layer on more workload to your staff, but I am trying to figure out a way of providing a little more context to what's in the PowerPoint. And I don't know what that would look like, but maybe something we can just think about what would be reasonable, because the application, it would be very hard for a layperson to...
Yeah. I have some ideas offline. I think there's a way that we could look at the state of special ed in general. This is a specific technical application for federal funds that's been a requirement. So that's, I think, why the board may be here with so many things that you have, have treated it as it's a technical application to the federal government. It still has to come to you to review to apply beyond a more conversational look at the state of all things special education. What are the policy implications? What are instructional strategies? What are funding streams? A more holistic approach. This is just a piece, really, and as you see, a very small piece. When you look at $550 million for special education, there's a much larger part of our budget that's going around this. And I think we can work on, I would like to work with the board and figure out a way that we can tell that story. We have a lot of grows, as you know, but we have a lot of glows too of things that we've done well. Many people do choose Fairfax County Public Schools for the extensive services that we offer. And the reality is, it is a national issue and a state issue that there are school districts that are simply, do not have the capacity to provide for students' needs. And I was, I was somewhere else where I heard of school districts encouraging parents to move to another district or move to Fairfax, or, oh, you want that? Go, go somewhere else. So I really think it's a deeper conversation, and I think we can find a way to have a presentation that would meet those needs in the future.
I appreciate you providing that additional context, and I do think that's a key piece. When you actually look at, it was slide five, where we were looking at special education enrollment compared to our other surrounding jurisdictions. For our size of school districts, when you do a comparison with Prince William and Loudon and Montgomery County, some of the largest, they're closest to us, we do have higher numbers. And I'm hopeful the reason we have higher numbers is because families know that they can come to Fairfax and that we're going to do our best to try and meet the needs of their students. And so, you know, only Arlington has a slightly higher number, but again, they, they're a much smaller district. So anyway, I really do, again, appreciate this opportunity for us to be engaged more in understanding the depth of both the investment that the school division has in serving the student population. And just, again, for the audience who might be listening in, the special education population in our school district is what percentage of the general?
About 14%.
It's about 14%. So when you, again, look at $550 million, I think it reflects well on FCPS's commitment to serving every child by name and need. And then, as we know, by partnering with our community, it's, it's just looking for ways to refine and enhance how to deliver that investment in the best way possible. So thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara?
I too would like to echo my thanks for this opportunity. And I do see it as a beginning. I know that we've been growing together, some of it with a little bit of growing pains and growing strains. But, Dr. Brabran, I really do like your idea. You used a phrase, I don't know if you intended to use it or not, but you said "the state of special education." And I think that in light of some of the things that we're dealing with, it would really bode well for us and our community for there to be, for that to be a collaborative effort with the community, to be able to come forward and explain how we break this down and, you know, maybe even have, you know, a greater in-depth explanation of what we're doing and giving parents an opportunity to participate in that process. I just think that it would go a long way to bridging some of the concerns that we've been hearing over the past few weeks and really taking, you know, molding and building that partnership with the community and with parents that I know that we all want. So I am happy to be one of the board members. I'm sure there are many here who would love to see that happen, but, you know, a state of special education address as well as having our staff members available to the community, I think, would help to bridge that gap between the community and ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. I did want to correct myself. It was 1975. I got two different federal bills confused, that the IDEA was established and has never been fully funded. Before I... Okay, Ms. Palchek, would you like?
Just because, a lot of numbers in here, and I just wanted to clarify one more question. Back to category seven, not category...
Page seven.
Page seven, thank you. And I apologize if this was already asked. But can you clarify for us, that I'm, again, reading this correctly, that while overall services, unduplicated, only went up, I guess they're going up slightly every year, that we've seen a decrease in CAT A and other services?
CAT A and Level 1. And our less intensive services, we've seen a decrease?
And we've seen an increase in our more intensive services.
In the last 10 years, we've had about a 47% increase in our Category B Level 2 services.
And that's been across the board? And so, and so that, there, even though we're seeing a decrease in the others, we're still continuing to see an increase in Category B?
That's correct.
So that's correct.
Right. And just to keep in mind, the Category A and Category B are Fairfax County terms?
Right. And so, well, we can, yeah, if we could at some point do the bigger breakdown of costs and funding associated, I know you have that, but in a way to, I think for us and for advocacy, it's very helpful to be able to show the differences in, in the different categories, the funding that comes for them and what we spend on those services?
We can certainly partner with finance and provide some other information.
That would be wonderful. Make it, make it easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Just one last follow-up to Ms. Keys-Gamara's comment over the need to more fully engage our community. I would remind our colleagues that after our work session, a follow-up to that work session the other night was on building a task force to take a deeper look, not only at the situation with the restraint and seclusion, but also creating a better dialogue with the community to identify the concerns of the community. And so I do know that we have the ACSD as an important vehicle for this, but that doesn't necessarily get everybody to the table. And so with that, I will give Ms. Schultz an opportunity to speak.
I just want to emphasize that last point, that, you know, we have ACSD, the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities, as a state mandated committee. And the purpose of that committee is gap, basically gap analysis. Frankly, you know, where we are, Dr. Brabran, as a system, and where families find that we need to be in order to meet their needs. And, you know, I've often said, you know, we talk a lot about what we do well. We're really good at that, but sometimes we need to talk about what we don't do as well. And it doesn't mean that we're pinging in the system, but the opportunity for improvement exists in where you're not doing things well. And looking and working with the special education community is, you know, primarily for, from the board, as a governance matter, is through ACSD. We need to emphasize that. We're lucky that we've had the Special Education PTA get created as a vehicle to reach a lot of parents. But we have to be better, you have to be better frankly, at elevating ACSD to parents as a means for them to reach out. So we've got to do better at advertising them on our side and then have the handshake across the aisle with our, our community representatives and SEPTO and other organizations.
Well, we'll let Dr. Brabran follow on with the follow-on motion. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Immediately following this presentation, which we are now done, action, I'm reminding everybody, thank you very much for your hard work on this, and action on the Special Education Annual Plan is scheduled for April 25th at our regular meeting. Our next presentation is the Strategic Plan Goal 3 Premier Workforce. And I call on Dr. Brabran for the introduction.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. We're delighted to have our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Helen Nixon. I think, Helen, this is your first opportunity, Dr. Nixon, to present to the board, so we're very excited about her getting to share all the great work that we're doing around this premier workforce goal. So I'll let Dr. Nixon take it away.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Moon, members of the board, Dr. Brabran. I am very happy to be presenting with you the Goal 3 Premier Goal Report. The information you will hear in this report is aligned to the Strategic Plan Narrative Report, which is posted on Board Docs. I would also like to remind you that as we look at the newly adopted metrics, the reporting period is a look back in time to the FY '18, school year 1718. We believe that the metrics you approved provide FCPS a strong framework for supporting our premier workforce strategy. The two strategic focus areas for our goal report include exceptional employees. FCPS will recruit, hire, and retain exceptional employees. And the second strategic focus area is market competitive compensation. FCPS will offer market competitive compensation packages. You heard a lot about these words when you developed the new strategic plan, but for our audience, I wanted to take a moment to define some of the terms that we did not use in our previous goal reports but will be used throughout my presentation this evening. Baseline is the three-year baseline is the average performance from the school year 2014-15 to 2016-17. One-year baseline is the performance in school year 2016-17, only used when three-year baseline data is not available. The SY1718 performance is the data for this reporting period, school year 2017-18. Targets are what the division should achieve by school year 2020, and these were adopted in March 2019 as part of the strategic plan process. And aspirations are what the division wants to achieve in this strategic plan. They were adopted in March 2019 as part of our strategic plan focus. It is fitting to start our first strategic focus area on our employees. Our premier workforce is comprised of 28,407 full-time dedicated staff members who work to serve our students and school communities on a daily basis. Each and every one of our staff members plays a part in making sure our students have an exceptional experience in FCPS. A highly effective workforce is crucial for the division's success, and having strong human capital strategy ensures that there are supportive, high-functioning, and future-focused systems in place to attract, recruit, mentor, develop, recognize, and retain high-performing This slide shows a summary of our progress toward the five aspirational statements that support our exceptional employees. The following slides will provide detailed information on our performance in each of these areas. Every open teaching position will have at least highly, five highly qualified applicants, and we will see in the report tonight that we had no progress for this during that reporting period. All teaching positions will be filled by July 1st. We did meet or exceed that target during this reporting period. Employee retention rates will be within the national average. We did meet or exceed that. The diversity of qualified applicants will match the diversity of Fairfax County residents. We have made progress in this area, but know that we need to continue our focused effort. And the diversity of hired teachers will match the diversity of qualified teacher applicants. We did not make progress during this reporting period. Our first aspirational statement is every open teaching position will have at least five highly qualified applicants. I would like to take a moment to walk you through this slide. The format of these charts will be repeated throughout the beginning of the presentation. Each graph shows the baseline value in dark blue. Our 2017-18 performance is in the second bar. The dotted line represents the target the board approved for school years 2018-20. Finally, the red line shows what our aspirational goal is, and each of these values is represented in the chart below. Looking specifically at our performance in this metric, you will note that we regressed from baseline 1718, going from an average of 3.4 highly qualified applicants per position over the last three years to 3.1 applicants in 1718, hence the no progress during this reporting period. As you know, we have been reporting a decline in this number for the last several years. This slide, I'm going to share with you what we are working on in the Office of Human Resources to combat that. Challenges linked to the nationwide teacher shortage require that FCPS move away from a traditional model of recruiting. We must be proactive... We must be proactive and creative in the way we approach our recruitment efforts, building external and internal pipelines for talent. The Talent Acquisition Management Team expanded their outreach and recruitment schedule. In 2013-14, FCPS attended a total of 38 college and university teacher job fairs. Over the last six hiring cycles, we have increased that number to 87. Trips have been added in a strategic way to support FCPS diversity hiring goals and target programs producing teachers in critical needs areas. Additionally, we have also expanded the number of teachers that we have taken on recruiting trips with us to make sure that teachers are serving as our ambassadors as well. Our job fairs. We have increased the number of job fairs that we host from two per year to four. This allows us an opportunity to cast a wider net, to get our name out in the community, to attract new teachers, veteran teachers, career changers, and perhaps teachers from other districts who are interested in coming to Fairfax County as well. Our Back to Fairfax program is truly an initiative to engage our FCPS graduates as future employees. Our Back to Fairfax program is a way that we can build touchpoints with our FCPS graduates and let them know they can always come home. Our Teachers for Tomorrow program exists currently in six of our schools: Chantilly, Lake Braddock, Centerville, Mount Vernon, Edison Academy, and Falls Church. T for T is a wonderful opportunity for the students in our high schools who aspire to be teachers. They have an opportunity to earn college credit through a partnership program with Shenandoah University. Our HR office works collaboratively with a counseling and career readiness program to expand these programs in more of our FCPS schools. Our community partner outreach. This is an important endeavor for us as well, to network and encourage the building of bridges in our community. We have begun to cultivate relationships with the following partners in the last six months: the Korean-American Education Foundation, the Korean Engineers and Mathematical Association, the NAACP and the NAACP Youth Council, and the Latino Chamber of Commerce. Our second aspirational statement for this goal is that all teaching positions will be filled by July 1st. Hiring teachers earlier not only ensures that we can pick from the most highly qualified applicants, but that we open the school year with fewer vacancies. Our success in this metric is demonstrated by our performance in this area. In 2015-16, we opened the school year with 203 vacancies. This past year, we opened with 86 teacher vacancies. And our goal this year is to open with fewer than that certainly. And reaching our aspiration of 100% will ensure that every class has a teacher on the first day of school. We also aspire to have employee retention rates within the national average of 85%. This data captures the employees who separated employment from FCPS and does not include internal transfers from school to school. The SY1718 retention rates are at 93% for teachers, 96% for administrators, and 95% for operational employees. These are all within the national average. As this demonstrates, we have met our performance goal and will always monitor this. Our last two aspirational statements in this goal area talk about equity in recruitment and hiring. The first is that the diversity of qualified teacher applicants will match the diversity of Fairfax County residents. The chart shown here is a little different from those we looked at previously. The bars in the graph are separated out by their composition of Black, Hispanic, and Asian members. The first bar outlined in dark blue shows FCPS's baseline data. In the last three years, 25% of FCPS's applicant pool was composed of these three groups. In SY1718, our applicant pool saw a 1% increase in its overall diversity, represented by a slight increase in Hispanic applicants. Our target for SY2020 is to have an applicant pool that is 31% diverse, as noted by the dotted line. We have work to do to meet this target, as well as our aspirational goal of matching the third bar in the chart, the diversity of Fairfax County residents. Our efforts in this next year will be described in our next slide. Talent Acquisition Management, in collaboration and association with administrative partnerships at our schools, worked to create the framework for hiring for diversity. Our hiring framework has five major components: screening, the candidates for interviews, interviews, candidate selection, and documentation and records management. HR has centralized and standardized the process for fairness and consistency to ensure individuals who complete an application are the ones who are considered. The bolded actions are undertaken by HR to help increase that effort. Schools must interview candidates that have been screened and vetted through HR. Our HR team members also engage in conversations with principals in sharing candidate information and sharing candidate information, but also helping to make good fit matches with the schools. Our recruiters on the road work very closely with the principals, know where the vacancies are, take anecdotal notes, and make sure that they're sharing really great information and sharing candidates with their principal colleagues. Working with our school-based partners is critical for our efforts in hiring for diversity. HR has helped administrative teams at the school-based level structure their interview processes in a way so that all candidates can have a similar interviewing experience. This ensures fairness and consistency in the process. Our principals have begun to keep track of candidates as they interview to ensure that diverse candidates are being interviewed at the school level. These actions are intended to ensure that we hire the most qualified applicant in the pool, understanding that our diverse students deserve a diverse teaching force. This is the second component of our diversity data. As we increase the diversity of our applicant pool, it is important that the applicants we hire match the diversity of our qualified applicants. This will increase the diversity of our teaching force. This graph breaks out our baseline performance, our 1718 performance, our targets, and our aspiration for Asian, Black, Hispanic, and white candidates. For each of these groups, we want equal representation in our hires as compared to our qualified applicants. As we look back at SY1718 data, our performance showed our Asian candidates are 100% represented, with the applicant pool and the hires both at 7%. Our hiring percentage for Black candidates improved from 67% of the applicant pool being hired in our baseline data to 75% of our applicant pool hired. This group is still underrepresented, however, which remains a concern. Our performance for Hispanic hires regressed from the baseline of having 100% representation of applicants to hires to 86% representation. Again, this is a concern for our system. As our efforts to hire diverse candidate improves, our percentages of Black, Hispanic, and Latino qualified applicants should approach 100%. As you know, this is the first year that we are incorporating return on investment information into these annual strategic plan reports. This information is an initial look. The depth of reporting will improve in subsequent years as we align our programs, services, projects, and initiatives to the focused plan and its improved metrics. So FCPS devoted $128,000 towards strategic activities that maintain diversity of employees and high retention rates. We've increased our recruitment at historically minority-serving institutions. We've improved the applicant tracking tool functionality and use, implemented a principal hiring pool, and developed networking and information sessions. The second strategic focus area is market competitive compensation. FCPS will offer market competitive compensation packages. FCPS will maintain all pay scales within the 95% to 105% of market pay. FCPS will maintain all pay scales within 95% to 105% of market pay. The School Board and Superintendent have made this metric a focus of the budget process over the past few years. While the look-back data here shows that 29% of our scales are within market pay, at the end of the 2020 budget season, we anticipate we will be able to show that 100% of our scales are market competitive. This is thanks to the efforts and commitment of this School Board to fund these salaries and move forward with the progress of this goal. FCPS devoted $29 million for salary enhancements in FY '18: teacher enhancements, classroom instructional support, and Schedule H scales. Additional salary schedule enhancements were approved as part of the FY '19 and '20 budgets. And future ROI analysis will consider whether the investments in the market position linked to improve recruitment and retention. We move to future considerations. For our exceptional employees, we would like to continue to provide resources for greater external and internal recruitment pipelines. We want to continue to fund the partnership with Teachers for Tomorrow in every high school and fund our Back to Fairfax programs. In terms of our market competitive compensation, continue to fund market scale adjustments to ensure salary schedules are market competitive and review FCPS's definition of market competitiveness as 95% to 105% of the market. On Monday, April 8th, during our work session, we will also be reviewing the Leadership Team Compensation Report. A market study was conducted on the Superintendent's Leadership Team. And recommendations will be brought forward during Monday's work session to be considered for implementation in FY 2020. It is exciting to kick off the strategic plan with Goal Three. It is an appropriate start to this conversation, talking about the foundation of our division, our employees. I look forward to having the opportunity to speak in greater depth about this report at our work session on Monday. If there are questions that pop up over the weekend or ones that you would like to forward via email, please do not hesitate. And if there are any questions at this time, we'll take them.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. This has been a very informative report, and I know that a number of my colleagues have questions. So I'm going to start with Ms. Hines.
Thank you very much. So I just had a couple, this is very helpful, thank you, and for explaining everything. When I first looked at some of the graphs, I wasn't sure exactly how to understand them, but you explained them, so thank you. So just one question I had, a few questions. On slide, let's see if I can find it again. It's the one that gives our total number of employees and where they work. So it's early, slide five, I think?
Okay.
So I'm just looking at that slide five and trying to figure out from that what percentage of our employees are, you know, in schools, working in schools. So I mean, I look at the two, teachers and instructional and specialized assistants. They're all in schools, you know, in classrooms, right? So that gets us to about 68%, 67% of our employees. Is there anyone else on this list who, you know, is in schools? Because I think the percentage of employees who are in schools is something that's of interest to the community, you know, actually working with kids.
So I would say under custodial and office support, you know, main office, that kind of thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then on slide six, the next slide, I think that bottom measure, I'm really glad that we have this measure here. It's the diversity of hired teachers will match the diversity of qualified teacher applicants. I think that's the measure that's trying to get at the potential that people worry about for implicit bias in hiring, right? And it's something that came up a couple of years ago. We even had an article in the Washington Post that seemed to show that we had a lot more applicants who were from diverse backgrounds than we were actually hiring. So I'm glad we're measuring it. We're still working on making progress there. And in the underlying report, and I suppose we can talk about this more on Monday, but the underlying report does describe some of the activities that we're doing, that the school system is doing to try to increase the number of applicants from diverse backgrounds. But do we understand why there's that difference between the applicant pool, the diversity of the applicant pool, and then how many of those applicants are actually hired? I know we're trying, but doing more central screening and central interviews and all that, but is there something we're still missing?
I think it's continuing our collaborative conversations with our administrative teams, being able to hire earlier, being able to share best practices for having interviews at the school process, making sure that the structured interviews, all candidates coming into a school are having a like experience, having really targeted conversations, I think, with our school partners about examining the demographic data of their teachers at their schools and making intentional decisions about hiring and working collaboratively with HR to do just that.
Okay. So do we have a sense, and maybe I just missed it, of how many of those applicants in the pool of diverse applicants are offered a job by us and then don't take it?
So we don't have for this reporting period. It was only in this past year that HR developed that online tool for principals to fill out, and that's something that we can explore at the work session.
Okay, thank you. That would help because knowing how we're missing people is really important.
Right, and it was, this past year was the first year that we've done it, so it's in its infancy.
Sure, but that's good data to have, so thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I can answer one of Ms. Hines's questions. Using the WABE methodology, 93.4% of our employees are school-based and 6.6% are non-school-based.
You know, I'm glad you said that because that's what I remember from WABE, but then it's hard to see that on this slide, right? So is the WABE must just measure things differently? I mean...
Well, some of your categories, like specialists and technical personnel, some of them might be school-based, some of them might be non-school-based. Obviously, your principals, assistant principals, student service activity directors. So it depends on actually where you're, if you're located in a school or if you're located in central office is generally what drives those calculations. So this is just a different distribution. The total is accurate and the categories are accurate, but the distribution, which you can find in the WABE guide, is distributed by school-based and non-school-based.
Okay, thank you. So in other words, looking at the slide in this presentation, what we don't see is how many of some of these categories are in a school and how many are in central office. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hines, and thank you, Ms. Burden, for jumping in there. I think that was important.
Thank you.
Mr. Moon, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I look forward to a more in-depth discussion and conversation on Monday. So in preparation for the Monday discussion, let me give you some homework to do. I'm going to keep it within two hours, according to our homework policy.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, good. You know, if you cannot do it within two hours, please let me know so that I can correct myself.
I will.
That... That, that, hey, one of the goals that we, I guess, regressed, basically, you know, wanting to have a five position, no, five applicants per every teaching position, you know, going from three point four of a baseline to a three-point wall for 2017 and 2018 performance. Would you be able to, if you can, quantify the impact of overall improvement in economy and job market? How that's affecting our ability to attract more applicants for teaching positions? Because now we have to be, you know, competing against non-school jobs out there. I don't know whether you can quantify that or you can really give us a qualitative statement on Monday? Or if you wanna try that right now, perhaps you wanna wait until Monday?
Yeah, I think so.
Then wait until Monday. And also, I'm gonna give you a little deeper than that. When you come back on Monday, because I was trying to find the raw data, some more detailed data in the narrative, but I did not find in the narrative. But I'm sure that you do have this data. Whether you can even categorize that, that our data into subjects, broad subjects such as, let's say, even starting with a general ed versus special ed, language arts, math, science, arts, social studies. I just wanna see whether we, whether there are certain areas we have a more competition or we are having a harder time in finding qualified teachers. And if you could also include on Monday, whether you can give us, whether we have hard-to-staff areas. I could suspect potentially some special education, some world languages, and for those hard-to-staff, maybe STEM as well. Maybe for those hard, harder-to-staff, let me put it that way. Harder-to-staff areas, whether we have any, any different strategies to tackle the problems or challenges. That's all for Monday.
Okay.
And lastly, I don't think we'll probably, I don't think we'll get to this on Monday, but perhaps when we discuss on budget follow-on motion and budget amendments. Because my budget follow-on, one, motion had to do with, you know, how to better support, continue to support our teachers going forward. I think, I mean, I like when superintendents use the expression being market leader versus market average. I think we are using market competitiveness, competitive, but that's for us, I think, market competitive, that seems to be the same as market average. But that I know that, I'm looking forward to this discussion, but, but I, because I believe that, believe that, I want Fairfax County Public School System to be the best, continue to remain the best, and even better than the best. You know, for us to do that, we need to continue recruiting and retaining the best teachers. And, you know, for us to be the leader, I'm not sure whether market average is good enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Nixon, for an excellent report. I did wanna make a couple of comments and also get some, some clarification in a couple of areas. Clearly, in, in several areas, we are doing very, very well and improving, and congratulations to you and your team on that. You know, particularly, I look at slide ten and see that we are, you know, well above the national average on retention rates. As, as we have discussed, we might want to revisit whether, looking at the national average on retention rates is, is our appropriate metric, considering that we are already well above that. And that's something that I want to discuss on, on Monday as well. Eighty-six vacancies, that's such a phenomenal improvement. And I do agree with Mr. Moon that we should have a discussion of particular areas. My understanding, at least from my community, is that special education is a particularly difficult area and ESOL as well. Is that, is that, does that remain true now that those are the two highest areas with particular needs?
Yes, and I can, Sean, not ESOL? Not special education, but not ESOL.
Not ESOL, all right. So I guess that would be an opportunity on Monday to discuss, what do we need to do? If you look at those eighty-six vacancies, then a significant number of those would be in the special education area. Is that correct?
That'd be good.
Of the ones that we did not fill?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we, we might wanna give special attention to that. If we look at slide eighteen, I get a little, I get a little bit concerned that we might not be giving ourselves quite as much credit in at least some areas there. If we could go to slide eighteen. So I just wanted to clarify, with, with the investment that we have this year in the teachers' salaries, we will now be with, with our scales, we will have completed that investment, we will have completed our salary scales, and then we will be between ninety-five percent and a hun, and a hundred-and-five percent in, in at least that area.
That's correct.
So I guess, Dr. Nixon, I would ask you to clarify because that was a significant, significant effort on the part of the school board and the school system and the superintendent to get us to that point. So that's, that's a major achievement to my mind.
Absolutely.
So I'm a little concerned that people will see this twenty-nine percent and misunderstand where we are. Could you clarify that a bit?
So I just wanna clarify that this report is a look back in time. So this is seventeen, eighteen school year. So this twenty-nine percent is where we were then, but we have come a long way since then. So by the FY20, we will be at a hundred percent.
Okay, that's wonderful to know. And I, I will agree with Mr. Moon that now that we're, it, it was a long haul to get there, but now that we are there, we probably need to be thinking in terms of what
Yes.
is, is the average good enough
That's right.
for Fairfax County. And so I, I do as well hope that we can improve that and see that we need to be above average because we wanna stay more than competitive, particularly with the teacher shortage, both nationally and locally. And then I do wanna say, I, I have a concern, and I know that the board has a concern, when we compare the, particularly if we look at slide eleven, if you compare slide eleven and slide fourteen, but I'll just, you know, start with, with slide eleven. We need to have more of a conversation that, particularly in the area of our Hispanic applicants. I just wanted to make clear that people understand, you know, our, our community, you know, we're, we're falling short there, you know, we just, we just are. We've got forty-four percent diverse community members, and we're only at twenty-six percent of, and that's applicants we're talking about there now. So if you look at the discrepancy between the, we have nineteen percent of, of our community members are Hispanic, but only seven percent are applicants. We, we need to, to find a way to, to improve that in particular. And then if we go to fourteen, that then, slide fourteen, I think it's kind of in the fine print there
Yes.
that, I'll go to it on my page here, too. It's a little bit in the fine print that we are only hiring, only six percent of our hires are Hispanic, correct? And the comparison of our twelve percent black applicants and only nine percent hires. No, isn't that what that says?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So that twelve percent of our applicants
Yes.
are black, correct? Is it?
Are we looking at baseline or seventeen, eighteen? The seventeen, eighteen?
Uh, I'm talking about...
Nine percent of the hires.
Right, nine percent of the hires, but doesn't it compare with twelve percent of the applicants?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Well, but I'm looking, well, we're, we're... Okay. The comparison that I'm making is that twelve percent of our applicants are African-American and only nine percent of our hires are African-American. And I, so I think we have some work to do
Absolutely, yes.
there as well. But I, I, you know, think that with, particularly in areas like mine, in Mason District, where we have a high percentage of Hispanic families and Spanish-speaking families, I think doing more with, with hires in that area is particularly important. So I'd like to have more of a conversation about that as well. So we have a lot to talk about on Monday, and, and I appreciate all the data that you have brought us.
And we'll have our, Sean and the rest of my directors will be there on Monday to help fill in as well for any questions.
Thank you very much.
So Ms. Schultz, please.
So I wanna provide a little clarity on, on what's been said at the table tonight. First of all, we're gonna have a work session on this. But talking about what we, who we've hired versus who applied is missing a huge part of the equation. It was missed in the Washington Post article, and it's missed in this discussion, and it needs to be included. There's a difference between the hire versus applied, and that's the offer. Not everybody, we, we may offer people jobs and they don't take them, therefore, we can't hire them. And so that is a, a major component of what needs to be discussed. And if, as the, the one statistic was just quoted, twelve percent of the applicants are African-American, and we hire nine percent of them, then we're hiring seventy-five percent of them. That's a, that's a pretty good statistic. I don't know what that is to a national average in HR, but hiring seventy-five percent of the people in a subgroup that apply is, that's a pretty high statistic. So we have to have data in context. What I would like to know is what is the graduation makeup of education majors by subgroup in the nation?
We can have that for you by Monday, but I can tell you that in teacher prep programs, it is less than two percent for black students in teacher prep programs.
So less than two percent of the nation's education majors are black, and how about Hispanic?
That I don't know.
Okay, so we, we have to have context. If, if nothing, I'm not consistent. I'm consistent always. We have to understand what the population are who are available to apply in the first place. And then are they attracted to come here? Because can we go to slide seven, please? So this is the average number of qualified applicants per teaching position. So the goal is to get more qualified applicants. How many aren't qualified?
How many get screened out?
Mm-hmm.
No, we don't have that number.
Okay. So the number of people who apply, who are screened out because they're simply not qualified, because this is a statistic that is used against us a lot out in public as well. You know, you have X many applicants, you know, you have your pick. Well, you could have a hundred people apply for the job, and if only two are actually qualified, you, the ratio changes dramatically. So again, I think we should talk about who, who aren't qualified. That's a part of the important part. Can we go to slide ten, please? So on the national, the national measure versus what we're doing, if we're retaining basically at about ninety-three percent, it looks like, and that's the national average, aren't there some people that you don't want to stay?
So, yes, I mean, there are some candidates or some teacher candidates who find that the teaching profession is not for them.
Right.
There's turnover for people who move.
You don't wanna hold on to everybody. Because some people, I mean, if I recall, our first five-year teacher retention rate is also right at the national average in terms of the number of teachers that we lose. But those are really, those are teacher, those are people who go into teaching, who then figure out, oh, I'm all day long in a classroom with kids. This may not be, like, I thought this was gonna be my chosen profession, and they go on to have a different choice. So there's, so we're at the norm on the first five years, and we're at the norm on the overall retention. So my, my question would be, how much higher do you want it before you're not getting a return on the investment of increasing retention? Like, that you're increasing retention not to the good of the students in the classroom or not to the good of the overall division? Like, is, you know, if, I mean, we, we could get to ninety-nine, but is ninety-nine, I, I don't know that that's good.
Right. Well, I don't know that we would ever be at ninety-nine or a hundred percent just because of life experiences and people who transition out and retirement rates. But I think it's important to monitor the retention rates and ensure that they're high so that the, the students have consistency of instruction, so that we're making sure that our workforce is happy and healthy and producing and that, you know, we've got teachers who are feeling like they are engaged in their schools. I think being above the national average is something for us to be very proud of. I mean, that, so seven percent of people who will rotate out or leave the profession, I think that's normal, too. I mean, the, the ninety-three percent, I think, is very high, but there's also a story there for the seven percent who leave, and finding out why that happens, I think, is important.
Well, we're not, we're in a highly mobile
Sure.
area. There are wonderful higher education opportunities where people may move into teaching in college. Teachers may leave after they have children. They decide that they're gonna stay home with their children for a period. So, I mean, I just think that understanding the gap is important because I don't know what the goal is to increase, at which point it is no longer beneficial to the system.
It may not be, so to your point, it may not be that it's increasing. I think it might be more making sure that we're monitoring it, that we're hearing teacher voice and we're hearing about their experiences so that we don't certainly fall below the national average, but making sure that we're constantly monitoring it.
Right. I, I mean, if ninety-three percent are really, really happy, you know, trying to keep, you know, people who don't necess, like, golden handcuffing them, I don't know. I don't know that that's necessarily wise. I, I wanna understand that a little bit better. And if we could go to slide fourteen, my last question. Slide fourteen. So on the, these over and underrepresented, this is where I had the question on the, basically, what is the pool of applicants? What, what, you know, we have the N for us, but what is the, the greater N that is out there? That, I think, fills in sort of the Paul Harvey rest of the story because if we're attempting to hire people who are not going into the education profession, we're trying to solve a problem that we don't have the ability to solve. Like, maybe part of that discussion is a discussion with, with kids in high school about the value of becoming a teacher and, and growing future teachers, you know, homegrown or working with the college, I mean, I've asked for, I don't even know how many years, for a roundtable of colleges and universities about what they're looking for in students and then what we're looking for in their graduates so that it's a life-cycle education analysis with the, with the colleges. So we're working with them, not sort of operating in a siloed environment. So just more for the discussion on Monday.
Thank you.
Ms. Schultz, I'd be happy to share with you some of the data that I receive. Being on the board of the Boston University Wheelock School of Education, we've looked at a lot of those numbers and the decreasing number of students going into education. I'll be happy to share some of that with you. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamar?
I knew she was... Okay. I just wanna identify a few things to make sure when we have the work session on Monday, if you can have it.
Sure.
I'll try to give you a heads up. There's some concern about being able to get the, the language teachers... There's some concern about being able to get the language teachers certified coming from other areas where they haven't been teaching, and I don't know if we have any.
International teachers, you mean?
Yes. So, I don't know if you'll have any numbers to show our improvement in that area. I'm interested in that. And I've asked for this information before, and I know it's coming, but I don't know if we'll talk about it on Monday or not in terms of those people that are leaving, if we can get the demographic breakdown of the people who have separated in the last year. I'm interested in being able to identify if there's any particular areas of concern, or, you know, if there are any patterns. And will we have any survey information with respect to, I don't know whether we've been able to survey our minority employees in terms of whether they're having particular concerns that may be different than their counterparts?
We did not put a survey out through HR specifically for minority teachers. The surveys that would have gone out would have been captured in the Workplace Employment Condition Survey that went out through VDOE. We didn't have our own separate survey.
Okay, I know you had a slide in here, I'm not sure I'll be able to find it, about your particular efforts to try to improve some of the numbers.
Our outreach, the outreach.
Yeah, your outreach. Do you know what number that was?
Sorry.
No, I should have written it down. Oh, I think I found it.
Slide eight.
Number eight, okay. So, we've had more job fares back to Fairfax Teachers for Tomorrow, Community Partner Outreach. I'm wondering, have we considered other programs or looked at other nearby jurisdictions of what they may be doing to try to address this problem, such as mentorships or things of that nature?
So, last summer, Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Smith from Montgomery County Public Schools got together, and there was a professional learning exchange between our leadership team and the Montgomery County Leadership Team, and I attended my first meeting with that team back in March, I guess it was, March 5th. And I've met with my like colleagues twice since then, and they have shared what their recruiting and pipeline efforts are, which are very similar and aligned with some of the things that we're doing. They have the same kinds of challenges, they have the same kinds of very robust conversations about where we are and where we're going and how we're going to get there with this focus on making certain that we're looking at a diverse workforce. And I think our recruiting efforts and the things that we're doing are very much aligned with a large district like Montgomery. I can even speak to a smaller district where I came from in Maryland as well. Some of these things are going on, but certainly not a Teachers for Tomorrow program at this level. And the Community Partner Outreach, we have such a robust community here, and we have so many different organizations that truly just making a cold call and finding really great partners. And sure, I'd love to meet or, yeah, I'd love to come and hear more about how we can partner. I will tell you, even in some of the communications with the Partner Outreach, it really is not just about getting to kids in some of those endeavors. It really is about having conversations with some adults to help us spread the word. I sometimes will ask at the dinner table, when I'm meeting with certain folks at the dinner table, do you ever discuss what a great career option teaching is? And, you know, a lot of times, the response will be, no, not really. And so, some of that networking with the outreach, it really is about getting to the adults and having them really be our ambassadors, too. This is a great profession. We need advocates in the community who look at teaching and, you know, want their kids to aspire to do that. It really is a great profession, and it takes a special kind of person to be a teacher, you know? I mean, they're, and so, we want the best. We want highly qualified teachers, we want teachers with a big heart, we want people who are committed to kids, who are committed to having high expectations for all kids and having really great core belief systems about what kids can do, and who want to partner with parents and communities. So, I have found that in just some of the initial conversations, there's a lot of energy about what can I do to help? Our community wants to help. They want to help get the message out, and they're very excited about it.
Good. One last question. I don't know if the numbers you bring will show if there are any differences in the separation numbers, and I may have mentioned this before. Like, we know there's some differences in terms of hiring, but also with respect to who's leaving or how quickly they're leaving, or anything like that. I'd like, if we have those numbers, it would be great, too.
Right, and so, I will work with my team to get that.
Okay. Well, thank you. I really appreciate having this opportunity and hearing the progress. I know in areas where we need to grow and where we have some glows. I know we made some changes before you came on board. Been anxiously awaiting seeing whether that was the right direction. I'd like to hear whether you feel like this, you know, some of the changes that have been made are the right direction, or whether we need to, what other recommend, future recommendations you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. First of all, to my colleague Ms. Evans, I was looking at slide 11 that was talking about our applicant pool by subgroups, and then the county's percentage of subgroups by population residents. So, when she was saying 12 and 9, I'm thinking, well, it's 12 and 9 based on representation, so. Apologize for that, that it just happened that 12 and 9 also relates to a different slide. So, I appreciate your patience with me. This is, you know, right now, just your public, you know, introduction to the report. I know we're going to have a robust work session on Monday, and it's late, so, I'm going to try not to actually be one of the school board members who asked a lot of questions tonight, but just, I do want to touch on a few things. First of all, with the efforts we're doing on recruiting, I don't know if it's going to be in this report, or maybe it's going to be a follow-on report, but being able to get a better sense of our return on investment for our recruiting efforts. It says something about the money we spend, but it doesn't necessarily say, you know, how many applicants are we yielding out of it, at what cost per applicant, when we look at those recruitment efforts? Because we obviously don't want to be doing recruiting efforts that just aren't yielding that return. I don't know, but a lot of these slides, when they talk about qualified teacher applicants, I want to make sure that on Monday, we're prepared to kind of provide very specific information about what makes a qualified applicant, so that.
And what requirements, right.
Yeah, how do we actually define that? Because it could sound very subjective. I'm sure there's more objective criteria, but it would be good for us to spell that out. In terms of what we're doing, Ms. Schultz brought up something that I've referenced as well, when there was concerns regarding the George Mason study and the concerns that it raised in the community understandably. But data in context is so critical. And so, whether it's now, whether it's going forward, but we've talked about this, Dr. Braybrand, before you joined us as the superintendent, that we've got to have that middle number. Just like with college applications, you have your applicant pool, you have the number of accepted students that the colleges invite to come, and then there's the yield of who actually enrolls. And so, if you only have, you know, data point A and data point C, but you don't have B to tell you what you were doing, you're going to get judged on C when we should be judged on B. So, if we have X percentage that are applying, how many did we offer?
I want to say, Dr. Nixon, we are putting in place a process this year.
This past year, we did.
Right. So, we will have the data.
Not for 17, 18, but.
No, right. Because this is a look back.
Sure.
This year, right? I want to make sure I'm getting ready to say the right thing to the board. This year, we'll have that data point for you. We listened to the board. I wasn't here when it came up, but I heard about it when I arrived, and it's, let's get that metric. So, we're going to have it.
I appreciate that, Dr. Braybrand, and I only want to spotlight it because I do want to prepare my colleagues. We all need to be very mindful that as the public is going to digest this report, and especially, again, people concerned about what the George Mason study was saying, if we are able to help explain that the George Mason study and this 2017-18 data is still missing a crucial middle data point that we will now begin to capture, and I will just say, again, it wasn't under your watch, but I'm disappointed, because it wasn't under your watch either, that we didn't find a way sooner to get that data point even for 2017-18, because we were dealing with that problem before then. The other thing that I just wanted to touch on is that tomorrow, I happen to be going to the Lake Braddock Ceremony for Teachers for Tomorrow, so, I'm excited about that. And I see you listed that this is something that we hope to grow across other schools. I think it is an absolutely fantastic program and absolutely look forward to a plan or an opportunity to grow this, because as many of my colleagues have shared tonight, you know, and Ms. Evans, you were probably the most vocal in drawing attention to it. When you look at this slide 11 and you look at the demographics of Fairfax County to the demographics of our applicant pool, to Ms. Schultz's point as well, if they're not in the pool because they haven't decided to pursue education at the college level to then become part of our applicant pool, we're, we've got to start sooner to encourage more individuals to look at teaching. That said, I'm going to get on my soapbox real quick with my colleagues because our student representative, Benny Tigner, talked again about student workload. Well, student workload is teacher workload. For every assessment they are given, the teachers have to correct it. And, Dr. Braybrand, I'm just going to use this opportunity to say it again. If we do not address the very real teacher workload challenge, that I know you're dedicated to it, but it's real, and we can't, we can't keep recognizing it, we've got to do something about it, because I'm about to share with my colleagues, again, just a sample of an assessment, how many grades are going into assists in a quarter per student? The teachers are overwhelmed, and what's happening is, the students are picking up on it. And I'm very worried that great people aren't going into education because the workload volume is so bad that the burnout is so high. So, we want to grow the profession and inspire people to go into it. Ms. Hines, you're probably a perfect person to be able to speak to this on Monday, so, reflect on it and be, see if you're willing to talk about it. But when you entered teaching versus what you're seeing now, and I don't know if Arlington does what we're doing in Fairfax, but I really am worried that even just trying to enter into our student information system for the parents to see, teachers are having to put in 150 students times, you know, the nine assessments that they've given in each quarter. I mean, the teachers are just overwhelmed, so, it's, I think that's a big piece of it. And finally, I will also say this, Dr. Braybrand, I've brought it up with some of the other LT members. We don't have college partnerships with all of our flagship universities. In particular, a Fairfax County resident who, children came through our school system. They're at UVA, they would love, love, love to come back and work for us, but they don't have the teacher internship opportunities. And apparently, it has something to do with how UVA does or doesn't provide supports to it. But the point being, the parent said to me, my child would be here in a heartbeat to do the internship while they're an undergrad and then, you know, get that, because apparently, then it can lead to a job offer. And so, I think we're missing some of our Virginia graduates because of that.
If I could, one thing in that vein, that's something we'll definitely look into. I just want to make sure the board and the public heard something tonight. Our Teach for, Teachers for Tomorrow program, six schools, we're going to work to get it in every high school. Tomorrow, we're going to have a program, we're offering all those kids, every one of those kids, for the first time ever in Fairfax history, an early contract for employment to come back to Fairfax County and be a teacher in four years after getting their degree. So, already, they're all getting a letter of employment. There's some fine lines, like you've actually got to finish college.
Maintain grade levels, great point.
Whatever. But it's the start of a total mindset shift that we have to grow our own. And that, as some other board members, Ms. Evans and others, Karen, Ms. Karen Keys-Gamar, Ms. Schultz, someone, the entire board has shared, we can get the diversity by growing our own, because our own students are diverse, and giving them a passion for teaching earlier. We've got to resell a generation on being public school educators, because they've grown up in an era of testing and teacher bashing, and we have to have an obligation and lead the conversation in Fairfax for the state and the country about education being noble, about educators being people that need to be looked up to in the community. We need to get the money right, but we need to get the support right, and we need to get the encouragement right. And I think we're getting ready to do a major game change. No other program are you getting handed employment. And we're going to do more of that, too, not just for instructional, but looking at our educational support professionals and getting kids to come back and be some of our HVAC techs and our carpenters. And that's the kind of thing we've got to start to do, and we're going to do it more systematically in the years ahead.
Agreed, and I'll just close out by saying, however, it's what we say versus what students see. And when they see, when they see that their teachers are overwhelmed and overworked, it doesn't matter if we call it noble profession, if they're seeing that their teachers are overwhelmed. So, what I would just say, Dr. Braybrand, is, as we want a premier workforce, we have to create a premier workplace. And a premier workplace means not to overload and overwhelm the very people we're trying to maintain. So, thank you, Dr. Nixon, I really appreciate the hard work you're doing here. And the last celebratory point is, our teacher retention as a division as a whole is exceptional. And that's the celebration. And to my colleagues, the Human Resources Advisory Committee that reports to us, and it's only two years old, they're going to be coming to you with a really great report for the very first time in June. And one of the things that we're talking about is, the story is, things are great in Fairfax County for retention, but we have pockets of excellence and pockets of challenges. And it's doing that strategic focus on those areas of improvement that will then even have greater retention system-wide.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I don't have anybody else who wants to speak, so I'm going to just give a couple of comments. One, we heard from the community tonight about the importance of disaggregating the special ed teacher data. And so, if we could look to doing that in the future, I think that would be very important, as well as another piece, which is the number of our teachers who have disabilities. Because diversity is not just the color of our skin or the gods we worship. It is also disabilities, physical disabilities or other sorts of disabilities, that if we have that data, it would be very helpful, because I think that shows the inclusive community that we want to be. We've looked at the principal pool in the past as part of this report, and so, it would be helpful to know a little bit more about what we're doing with the principal pool these days.
The process, the process.
Pardon me?
The principal pool process.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. And then I just want to throw out an idea, because I was at a meeting the other day where they were talking about the sheer number of military personnel who, this is their final duty station, and there is a lot of focus on helping them retool their skills to other careers. And I'm wondering if Fairfax County is looking at, Fairfax County Public Schools is looking at recruiting from that sector, given that we are amongst the top seven in the country for the number of military personnel? Why aren't we looking at that pool?
So, last November, Mr. McDonald and I attended a conference down in Richmond, and we met with the folks from William &amp; Mary, who are the hub for the Troops to Teachers program. And so, we have done outreach to Troops to Teachers and know that we have a very active community here. So, we are in that pipeline. We do have our name out in that Troops to Teachers pipeline.
Okay, and we may be out there, but what are we doing to be the? And we may be out there, but what are we doing to be the location of choice for where these people want to come?
Well, through the Troops to Teachers Program, we advertise our job fairs.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
To come to us.
Okay. We may want to do something more intentional at Fort Belvoir, because it is the largest military installation in all of Northern Virginia. It actually has more personnel than the Pentagon, so that might be something we would look at. And then last, actually, two additional items. If you go to Page Five, and I don't need the answer right now, but we've talked throughout the presentation about the importance of paying well, so that people can live and work here. It would be helpful to know what percentage of these categories are not making a living wage and what we need to do to get them to a living wage, because obviously, we want people to stay in Fairfax County. So I believe that there are some of our bus attendants and van drivers that aren't quite at that level, as well as some of our educational support personnel, custodians and things like that. But it would be helpful for this board to understand what percentage. Okay? And then last but not least, last week, this board was at a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and part of that meeting was the Economic Development Council's promotion of bringing young people back to Fairfax County. And I don't think that it came up at the board table, but we may want to talk to the county about that promotional program. They're looking primarily at attracting people in the tech sector. We mentioned a number of other sectors, but it might be something that we could infuse some messaging on come back and teach in Fairfax.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. We are going to go to our confirmation of actions taken in closed meeting. And I call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
I move that the teacher identified enclosed meeting be dismissed effective immediately and that a recommendation to revoke the teacher's Virginia teaching license be forwarded to the Superintendent of Public Instruction at the Virginia Department of Education.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? And that motion is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table. I now call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used marijuana at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second the motion.
Seconded by Ms. Strauss. All those in favor? Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Hines and Ms. Corbett Sanders, those opposed? Ms. Schultz and Ms. McLaughlin, those abstaining? Ms. Keys-Gamara and Mr. Wilson away from the table. That motion carries. I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who assaulted another student and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Chief.
Second, Madam Chair.
Seconded by Vice Chair Moon. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table. It carries. I call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who is charged with a serious criminal offense related to an alleged community-based crime and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table. I call on Ms. Evans for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who threatened another student and a school staff member and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table.
I call on Ms. Darrenak Kofax for a motion on the third quarter budget review.
I move that the board approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the FY 2019 third quarter budget review as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Seconded by Ms. Strauss. Ms. Darrenak Kofax, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just very briefly, we have had opportunities for discussion in our bus work section discussing third quarter funding. I thank you to my colleagues for your thoughtful comments and questions. Thank you to the staff, including Marty Smith, Lee Burden, Alex Wiggington, for your guidance. I look forward to approving this motion, and I know we have one amendment for further discussion tonight.
Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I think we are anticipating an amendment, so I think we go forward.
Ms. Evans, I call on Ms. Evans for an amendment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the third quarter recommendation to set aside 34 positions or $3.3 million of the FY 19 remaining staffing reserve to FY 20 be deferred until year end.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hines. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, I would, just briefly, Madam Chair. I had raised this earlier, both at the presentation and at our work session. I think it would be preferable, and I hope my colleagues will agree with me, not to capture this at this point. I think it's premature to do so. We did have this conversation at the work session for two reasons. One, we might have emergencies in our final quarter of this year, and I would not want us to be short on our staffing reserve. You know, we've gone through years where we were, in fact, very short on our staffing reserve. And, you know, it's great that we are not this year, but we don't want to put ourselves in the position where we are. And then, secondly, we have significant budget decisions to make in the next two months. And so rather than set, put this aside and put this into the next fiscal year, at this point, I think we need to simply keep the money where it is for the time being and then make a decision after we've made our other budget decisions. So that's my rationale, and I hope my colleagues will support me in keeping this money where it is for the time being.
Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your second?
I won't add anything. I think Ms. Evans said it well.
I call on Ms. Schultz.
To turn off my light?
That works as well. So I will read the amendment before us. I move that the third quarter recommendation to set aside 34 positions or $3.3 million of the fiscal year 19 remaining staffing reserve to the fiscal year 20 be deferred until year end. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table. It passes. So now I will call on my colleagues for the vote regarding the third quarter budget review. Let me read it again. I move that the board approve the revenue and expenditures changes reflected in the fiscal year 2019 third quarter budget review as amended by our previous, as amended? All those in favor? Okay, that's Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Hines. Those opposed? Ms. Schultz. Those abstaining? None?
Just as a point of order, I don't believe that we had a chance to speak to the main motion when you went back prior to the vote.
Oh, I apologize. Would you like to speak to it?
I just would. I would like to explain my no vote if you have the opportunity. So I am concerned about, you know, growing legal things that are appearing in public that are in the public discussion. I'm not sure that we've necessarily addressed those. I do appreciate Ms. Evans having the temerity to say, no, we're not going to approve this now. I think that was a good move, and that's why I voted for that amendment. But I remain concerned about, you know, potential coming costs, and I'm not sure that this wisely necessarily took that into account, so I'm at least glad that that held it back. So I appreciate Ms. Evans, but I was not going to vote for the overall budget review. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schultz. So I now call on Ms. Strauss for a motion on the high school English basal instructional materials.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move that the school board approve the titles listed for high school language arts as recommended by the Language Arts Basal Instructional Materials Adoption Committee and the Selection Advisory Committee.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hines. Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. At a recent work session, staff presented us with their thinking and the results of the selection advisory committee. They shared with us the process for the selection and also provided us with copies of the materials so that we were each personally able to take a look at all 10 submissions. So I'm urging my colleagues to approve this tonight so that the purchases can be made and the teachers can have the materials in time for fall. We have not adopted a language arts basal instructional materials since 2007, and there have been changes in the SOLs. One of the important additions, several important additions in this adoption, is materials for older students, middle and high school students who need additional instruction in reading and language arts. Also, within this adoption, some very engaging student material that included diverse sources of material. It was culturally diverse, and I thought will be, I think, very, very engaging for students. So I encourage my colleagues to support this.
Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your second? I do not see any lights, so I will take the vote. All those in favor of approving the titles listed for the high school language arts as recommended by the Language Arts Basal Instructional Materials Adoption Committee and the Selection Advisory Committee? And that is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table. Now I go to the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through the board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, approve the minutes of the December 20, January 10, and January 24 regular school board meetings. 6.02, award a contract for the Hughes Middle School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Keller Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $41,388,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.03, award the contract for the boiler replacement at Fairhill Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Protec Construction, Inc., in the amount of $277,777,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.04, award a contract for the Westfield High School synthetic turf field installation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, the Landtech Group, Inc., in the amount of $988,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Seven, new business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled for a future meeting. 7.01, approve the strategic plan Goal III, premier workforce reported as detailed in the agenda item. 7.02, award a contract for the Bailey's Elementary School synthetic turf field replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.03, adopt the attached resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to approve and take all necessary and appropriate actions to place on the ballot for the November 2019 general election, a school bond referendum in the amount of $360 million. Item 7.04, approve the 2019-2020 Annual Special Education Plan, Section 611, Part B Grant Funding Application, and Section 619, Part B Preschool Grant Funding Application as detailed in the agenda item. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I just want to share with you, two schools were named 2019 Virginia Breakfast Challenge winners, Annandale High School and Pine Spring Elementary. They were winners in the Virginia Breakfast Challenge for increasing the number of students who participate in breakfast programs, implementing a breakfast-after-the-bell model, or expanding their existing model. Annandale High had 100% increase in the number of students participating in a breakfast program, and Pine Spring Elementary had a 311% increase in the number of students participating in the breakfast program. The Virginia Breakfast Challenge is an initiative No Kid Hungry, the Virginia Department of Ed, Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth, Virginia Hunger Solutions, and the Dairy Alliance. And participation winners are going to receive funding for school nutrition equipment, as well as funding to support technology enhancements, field trips, or playground equipment. I also want to share with you that FCPS has been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the National Association of Music Merchants, or NAM, Foundation, for its outstanding commitment to music education. The Best Communities for Music Education designation is awarded to districts, school districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all kids. Districts are evaluated on funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, and support for the music programs. And let me tell you, one of the things about leaving and coming back, the music program, the fine arts program in Fairfax County Public Schools is second to none in this country. And this is just another award to recognize how FCPS is leading the way, and music and our arts are so important as essential parts of our curriculum for all of our kids. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is board reports, and I call on Ms. Palchek for a report on the Public Engagement Committee. Ms. Evans for an update from the Governance Committee. Ms. McLaughlin for an update from the Audit Committee. And Mr. Moon for a report on the forum held earlier this morning. So Ms. Palchek. This evening, boy.
Thank you. Just a quick update, Public Engagement did meet again last month and continue to look at the proposed changes, updates to the citizen participation section. And we will be meeting, hopefully, our final review of it before it comes to the board on May 14th at 4:30 PM here at Jackson before the budget hearings. And also, on Monday, we will be coming to the work session with updates, and I hope the board has a chance to look at both the recommendations to update next year's calendar due to some changes in state legislation, but also, we have a very challenging calendar for 2020-21. It brings together very late Labor Day inauguration, the same week as another holiday. So there's quite a bit in there, which is why there are three versions. And hopefully, we can come out of there with next steps, which could include further inputs, options, and community input for 2020-2021.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Ms. Evans?
The Governance Committee is working away on the Strategic Governance Manual, and we have basically completed it up to the appendices, so we, and we hope to finish that very shortly. So we are going to complete that work, we hope, knock wood, and have a work session on that, I believe. I believe it's scheduled for May.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Given late hour, I will be even more brief with my audit updates. Two things. First of all, the Audit Committee did receive a very substantive audit report on our fiscal nineteen trades and staffing reserves audit that was done, and it was so good that we reached out to Chairman Corbett Sanders, and it will be brought to the board. Which date has that been decided yet?
We did schedule it, and I sent it out, but I...
Okay.
So I don't have the date with me. I'll get it to the whole board.
No problem. So just FYI, that would be coming, because I know, as all board members, that looking at staffing trades and staffing reserves has been a real important topic of interest, and Mr. Moon and Ms. Corbett Sanders can attest the fact that the more they presented, the more the questions kept coming about how it works at the school level. So I'm really looking forward to the full board receiving that report. I think it's going to generate a lot of helpful discussion with Superintendent Braybrand. And then, the second thing that we discussed, that, again, I want to just remind colleagues of the email I sent earlier today, that we are building and taking input on the fiscal twenty risk assessment status for determining our audit plan for next year, so please take a moment to look at the document that was sent to you and select the five areas of interest, so that will help our auditor general. And that was the key components of that. We did the business press over, business process turnover audits, but everything looked good there.
And Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The school board held a forum earlier this evening. Forum is an opportunity where board members can have informal discussion of topics of their own interest. This particular topic was presented by Mr. McElveen and Ms. Hines, and the topic was improving cultural understanding and historic integrity in the FCPS social studies curriculum and teaching. And the board agreed to hold a work session to discuss the current efforts of Instructional Equity Office staff to build a culturally responsive pedagogy and training program, and also talk about how to develop a plan for community engagement in this work, with opportunities for public review and comment.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I now call on Ms. Hines for board matters.
I will pass tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Palchek? Mr. McElveen?
Just very quickly, I'll run through the events that I've visited the past few weeks. Enjoyed going to Centreville International Night, South County International Night, joining Mr. Moon at the Teacher Inspiration Award at Chantilly High School, attending the Mountain Vernon Pyramid Concert, Hayfield International Night, Oakton International Night, All County Chorus, which is always such a pleasure, and joining several colleagues last night at the Woodson Pyramid Art Show. And I wish everyone a wonderful spring break, and I know that my colleagues and I all need it. Good night.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax?
I'll try to be equally quick. I, with you, Ms. Corbett Sanders and Dr. Braybrand, we had the pleasure of attending a assembly of the Medal of Honor recipients at Hayfield Secondary, where they talked to student groups, and it was extremely inspirational, hearing their stories, how they rewarded their medals, and what their philosophy is on life. It was, as I said, very inspirational. Also, I just wanted to tell, say, our student leadership cohort for our school board, I was always impressed at what they presented, adoring their mock forum topics, so thank you to our students. I attended NSBA with several of my colleagues, including Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Ivy. It was great to learn from members, you know, to see other board members from around the country and learn a bit, a little bit about best practices. Some of the ones that I went to included ones on equity, diversity, school safety, and community schools. And thanks to all who came out last Wednesday evening, yeah, that was last night, to our budget discussion at Lee District. The Lee District Association of Civic Organizations hosted the forum, Supervisor McKay, Joe Montoro, Brian Hill, we're all there. And thank you to Lee Burden for coming out and assisting me with the FCPS presentation. And yes, please have a great spring break.
Mr. Moon?
I'm going to yield my time to Mrs. McLaughlin.
He is always too kind and too generous. So I just wanted to mostly spotlight last night that my colleague Karen Keys-Gimara and Mr. Ryan McElveen joined me over at Woodson High School, where they had the Woodson Pyramid Art Show, and it was amazing to see the incredible artistic talents of all of our students throughout the pyramid. It was an amazing turnout. One particular artist who won the principal's award, her paintings were so phenomenal that we thought they were black and white photographs, but they were actual paintings. Her brushstrokes were so remarkable. But it was, it was really heartwarming to see not just the community come out in support of all of these artists, the teachers and all of their passion, but the creativity. Ms. Keys-Gimara and I walked around quite a bit, and we could not stop taking pictures of all of the remarkable artwork, and one in particular was a three-dimensional dragon in this brilliant blue, and it looked like something out of Game of Thrones. It was, it was, it was a great time. And otherwise, in terms of anything else that's going on in Braddock District, again, tomorrow, Mr. Moon and I will be over at Teachers for Tomorrow, celebrating with the Lake Braddock students who are part of that program. And otherwise, I'm sure I'm forgetting all the other fun things that have been going on of late, but I do want to just do a plug again, for anyone still awake, that we do have the Special Education Conference this Saturday, starting at, I believe, the early hour of seven forty-five for the early bird sessions, but the keynote speaker will be at nine o'clock in the morning, and I imagine many of us will be there in attendance, so I do hope that families will take the opportunity to attend.
Ms. Keys-Gimara?
Okay, I will actually be quick. I did enjoy the art show, and the dragon's tail was robotic, so I wish we had brought the pictures to run for everyone. I will be at the deliberative discussion with civic students tomorrow at Rachel Carson Middle School. I'll also be at the Teachers for Tomorrow and the Special Education Committee gathering on Saturday, so everybody have a happy spring break.
Ms. Evans?
I just wanted to add my voice to congratulate Annandale High School also on being recognized for their Breakfast Challenge. That's quite an honor, so congratulations to them. And I was at Justice High School Spring Fest tonight. It was part of Shine On Week in honor of alumni Casey Schulman, where they focus on kindness and joy, and it is always a wonderful week and a wonderful event. So particularly want to note that Principal Eck and several teachers and staff members were such good sports about going into the dunk tank, which was a lot of fun, and the students and teachers all had a great day to enjoy spring.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank, I wasn't out here earlier, I want to thank Benny for his kind comments earlier. That was a little bit of practicing joy yourself. You're an amazing young man, and your parents should be very proud of you, and you should be proud of yourself. On Monday at six thirty, Robinson will be having the community meeting. I will be in attendance, I assume, with my colleague Ms. McLaughlin for the principal selection process, which is about to begin for the panel and to get community input with the interim Region Assistant Superintendent Jay Pearson. That's a very important, very important position. That's our second-largest school. There are also two I need to highlight. I do want to highlight the Fusion Four Robotics Team. Three students from Lake Braddock and one from Robinson are going to be competing at the Lego League World Championship in Detroit, April twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh, and wish them good luck. And then also, the FBLA team from Robinson has made states. There's one student on that team that I'm particularly close to and proud of, so I'm wishing them good luck at the state FBLA championship in Ruston this weekend.
Ms. Strauss?
Yes, along with Mr. McElveen, I was at the sixth grade All County Chorus with the seven hundred-plus wonderful singers, and congratulations to our students, their music teachers, the wonderful conductor. It's just a fabulous, fabulous event. I also want to congratulate, the Science Olympian Team is from Longfellow and Thomas Jefferson. They both won the state titles. For Longfellow, this is their eighth consecutive year winning in Division B, and this is the second year for Thomas Jefferson in Division C. And Longfellow and TJ will be representing Virginia at the national tournament at Cornell University on May first. On Saturday morning, I will be at Coates Elementary School, celebrating their tenth anniversary. In the next four weeks, there will be twenty-six CAPI's designated plays and musicals. We had sixty scheduled for the year, so we're down to twenty-six. So if you are looking for great culture and hard-working students, if you go to the CAPI's NCA website, you can see the schedule, and you have many, many wonderful productions to choose from. So, thanks.
And I, too, want to thank my colleagues for joining me at the National School Boards Association meeting this past weekend. There were some wonderful opportunities for getting continuing education and learning best practices in a number of areas. We actually divided and conquered. We split up the agenda and then shared information afterwards, which I thought was very helpful. And I truly enjoyed the sessions that I attended on best practices in special education, schools dealing with increased poverty, and trauma-informed schools, as well as, this past week, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, where the Joint Environmental Task Force was launched, which is going to be a joint effort between schools and the county on environmental sustainability issues. Today, I was able to attend the Math Honor Society meeting, where they focused on careers that use math and science, and they invite special guest speakers in, and it was fascinating because the Washington Regional Transplant Community Society came out and talked about the importance of donors, and so that was excellent. It was especially poignant, given some people that are near and dear to us that have recently had transplants. Want to make everybody aware of a really exciting opportunity for people, for students who have library finds that are outstanding. In the next ten days, you will be able to go to your local library and read aloud and eliminate your library finds. And so pass that around, folks. It's a great opportunity. This weekend, I look forward to seeing everybody at the Special Education Conference, as well as the Edu Futuro Emerging Leaders Conference on Saturday. And next week, we will all be at the budget hearing for the Board of Supervisors, and I will be advocating on our behalf with the approved budget, or the proposed budget from the school board. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.